Meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors, June 29th, 21, or June 9th, 2021 is called to order. Well, good evening. This is awesome. Look at all of the people. I'm getting some feedback, Brian, if you can hear me. I love the people. You can tell it's recognition night because we've got a crowd full of folks, which is awesome. Welcome to the Board of Education. June, will you please call roll?
Mr. Obarka.
Present.
Ms. Buckner.
Ms. Cortez.
Here.
Present.
Dr. Jones.
Present.
Ms. Woolsey.
Here.
Here. Thank you, June. All right. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Ms. Woolsey?
I would like to, let me find my agenda, ask that we move the John Barjé report that's currently under the Board of Directors up under the Superintendent Recognitions and Report, making it 2A so that we can allow them to move on.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as modified by Ms. Woolsey?
So mote.
Second.
All right, the motion has been moved in second. And June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Obarka.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner. Ms. Cortez. Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, the motion passes. Thank you, June. All right, Dr. Bedell, we will turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
All right, I'm scared to turn on the microphone. Hopefully, we can navigate through this. So, under Superintendent's report, we have a couple of items. We'll get started with our recognitions. We have our scholar superstars, our terrific teammates, outstanding administrators, and then there are a couple of community champions, and then we have a couple of announcements that I will provide before we move to the FY 21-22 budget review. So, for this portion, I will have Ms. Kelly Waito to come up and take us through this presentation.
Good evening, Board Superintendent Bedell. We are ready to do some recognitions this evening, one of the favorite parts of our evenings in our board meetings. So, we're going to start with our scholar superstars. This is a brief list of our three students we'll be honoring tonight, and we'll bring them up one by one to read a little bit about why they were nominated and why they're here this evening. So, first, May Wish, will you please come up? We'll have you. You get to stand here and listen to all the nice things that actually Ms. Kulp, one of your teachers, nominated you for, okay? So, let's read a little bit about you. May Wish Aziz is an eighth grader at Northeast Middle School. May Wish is hardworking, she's intelligent, and she's a student who strives to understand her work, not just complete it. She has fought hard to participate in distance learning, staying for extra help most days, and asking questions often. She is a leader within our schools. Congratulations, Ms. May Wish. All right. We're going to take a quick picture so we can do this afterwards, maybe, after all the students go, and then we'll take a picture of Mr. Hogan and Dr. Bedell. So, May Wish, you go over here, and I have a certificate for you in a second, okay? So, you get to go right over there. Thank you for being here. And Kai, Kai Dahl, please come on up. Kai Dahl is a fifth grader at Primitivo Garcia. I told Kai that he's very tall for a fifth grader, as my son is a fifth grader and is not as tall as Kai. Kai brought with him Matt and Mom Michelle, right? And I, May Wish's dad is back here as well. Hello, father. All right, Kai was nominated by Donna Oster. This is what they said about Kai. He is an excellent academic student, he has great behavior, and he is a peer model. I used him to help a group of boys discover friendship during a lunch bunch. As a peer model, Kai has been a fantastic person to be this leader for our school. Congratulations, Kai. Thank you. All right, we'll go over here and get your certificate in a minute. All right, and then Lillian. Lillian is here. Where's Lillian? This is Lillian Aldana Rivera, and Lillian is a seventh grader at Northeast Middle. Lillian, you brought your mom and sister, correct? Thank you for coming, Mom and Sister. All right, Lillian was nominated by Catherine Brunz. This is what she said about you, Lillian. Lillian Janet goes above and beyond on assignments and projects. She is incredibly helpful in class, working with others while maintaining an excellent attitude. She is the first to volunteer in class and always provides insightful input into our class discussions and activities. She is involved with many different programs outside of class, and all her teachers, coaches, and advisors adore her positive contributions to our organization. She is a powerful advocate for the student body at Northeast Middle. Congratulations, Lillian. All right, so we're going to take a photo with Dr. Bedell and Mr. Hogan. And Camila, will you come up and help me with that? Where did Camila, here's Camila Alvarez. And we have certificates for you guys as well. This one right here. Perfect. Thank you, guys. If you want to get, you can go in there and I can take it. I'll take it. Want to take yours?
Yes.
Si quiero darme su teléfono, yo le puedo sacar la foto. Okay. Okay, lo puedo sacar la foto aquí? Okay. Ooh, hang on, guys. Hang on, hang on. I got more phones. Oh, that's on. I don't know how this one works, but, one more. Perfect. It's on video, but I don't know how to... Cool, that's perfect. Three, two, one. Okay, one more, guys. Awesome, thank you. Congratulations, Kai. Thank you for coming, family. Lillian May Wish, congratulations. Thank you for coming. All right, thank you, guys. Glad you were here. Yes, sir. We will, yes. Okay, sounds great. All right, next we have terrific teammates. Terrific teammates are staff members within KCPS that we like to recognize each quarter, and today, we're going to recognize four of them. We're actually going to start with Laura Kulp. Laura, come on up. Laura brought her husband this evening. And I think what's beautiful about Ms. Kulp night is that Ms. Kulp actually nominated May Wish Aziz, who is here, so I love that they got to see each other being recognized. So, Laura Kulp is a math teacher at Northeast Middle. And Mrs. Kulp, this is what they said about you. Mrs. Kulp goes above and beyond the call of duty to ensure her scholars have the resources to be successful, not only in her classroom, but in every class. Over the last month, students have had computer problems that prevented them from engaging in the curriculum and completing assignments at some points. For two students that I know of, Mrs. Kulp took their district's laptops to the BOE to trade, and she brought it to them when they returned to school. Going over and above and beyond in this manner has not only benefited the students, but her colleagues as well. Congratulations, Mrs. Kulp. Next, we have Reginald Ramsey, girls' basketball coach at Southeast High School. And did you bring a guest today? His wife is here with him. So, this is what the nominator, LaShawn Demiric, said about Reginald Ramsey. He continues to assist others. He's an excellent coach. He never asks of others what he will not attempt himself. Ramsey is someone many people enjoy working with. He's willing to help others succeed and meet their goals. Students and staff are pleased to be around Coach Ramsey. He always has a positive attitude and treats others with respect. I commend him and his staff for always going above and beyond for others. Congratulations, Coach. Yes. Love this. Okay, our next terrific teammate is Chantel Edwards, who's a sixth grade teacher at King Elementary. Ms. Edwards. So, Ms. Edwards, I'm not going to embarrass her, but Ms. Edwards, you've been at Field Day all day today at King Elementary in 91-degree weather. So, thank you for coming to a cool Board of Education building on Field Day. You got it. This is what the nominator said about Ms. Edwards, sixth grade teacher at King Elementary. Ms. Edwards is a great sixth grade teacher. She loves her work. She always has a smile on her face. I have sat in her class and watched her teach, and she is good at her job. She makes sure her students are engaged in the lessons, and she also makes sure that they understand what they are learning. She came from New York to Kansas City to teach, and I can see that she loves her job. I think she is a great person for this award. Congratulations, Ms. Edwards. Diana Anderson! Thank you for coming on Field Day, Ms. Edwards. Did you win at tug-of-war? It was kickball? Okay. Okay, okay. And lastly, for our terrific teammate, we have Crystal Caldwell, who's a registrar at Lincoln Middle School. Crystal, come on up. Ms. Caldwell is in her Lincoln Prep mask. Thank you. Oh, and Ms. Edwards, who'd you bring as a guest tonight? Hello, daughter. All right. So, this is a nomination by Dion Kulp, who nominated you for this award. Mrs. Caldwell is an efficient, intelligent, and hard-working individual. Her commitment to excellence in all that she does places her far above most. Her team mentality is superior and serves the school well in her efforts to take initiative and support the work of coworkers and colleagues. The level of kindness and professionalism that she exudes endears her to students, staff, and parents. She works late and offers extensive support to parents of students to ensure that each one receives the best customer service. Mrs. Caldwell is able to multitask with ease and has quick thinking when facilitating support school-wide. Her capabilities are truly assets that contribute to the success of Lincoln Middle School. Congratulations. Yes. All right, those are our four terrific teammates, and we'll do a photo up here, ladies and gentlemen, and we'll give you your certificates. Ah, okay. It's so easy to get with your photos because you get your terrific teammates stars. You are special. You can take the sticky notes off of them, you know. Okay, first one, if we can get in a little bit closer, perfect. Three, two, one. Thank you, and then family. And I'll take phones again if you guys want me to.
The Moka mentor, I gotta tweet him out. All right, thanks.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. All right, next we have our outstanding administrators. All right, these are administrators in the district who have been nominated by their colleagues or peers or families. All right, first we have Ms. Christian Foster with Lincoln College Prep Academy. Ms. Foster. All right, Ms. Foster, hello. Thank you for being here. You have a lengthy nomination. I'm going to read portions of it, okay? So, Ms. Foster is an outstanding administrator. She makes sure that kids and teachers have what they need to go above and beyond to make sure it happens. She trusts us to be the professionals we are. This allows us to come up with innovative ideas to support our kids, especially during these really tough times. Ms. Foster fosters an environment where teachers feel comfortable voicing concerns and go out of her way to validate us as teachers. I cannot describe enough how far that can take a person who is struggling. For example, our theater teacher and group just finished their show Zombie Prom. Ms. Starr struggled for a month-plus to get the sound system in working order properly, but was hearing no support from other corners. Ms. Foster was there the first night taking notes. Despite being exhausted, she took time to show up for her students and Ms. Starr. This was a direct message that she wasn't giving up and that she would do anything within her power to make sure these kids have what they need to be successful, not only academically, but also through following their passions. When my son died in March, Ms. Foster did everything within her power to make sure I was covered and took the time I needed to grieve. She cares about her people, her students, and her staff. When we first started the year, there was a program introduced that we English teachers were expected to use. We wanted to make sure that we could use it with fidelity, and she backed us up 100% in making sure that we had what we needed to support our students during this time. Ms. Foster has heard us out and connected us to the people we need to be connected to to make sure things happen. Lastly, Ms. Foster cares deeply for our students and their well-being. I have witnessed Ms. Foster chatting with students in the hall, and she calls them by their names and asks them questions that are specific to them. In every conversation that calls for any type of change, she always asks, "Is this what's best for the kids?" Congratulations, Ms. Foster. All right, and Christopher McNeil, sir, come on up here. Do you have a guest this evening with you? Hello, wife Tiffany. Thank you for coming. Mr. McNeil had several nominations, so I'll read snippets from each of them. Mr. McNeil, thank you for being here. Mr. McNeil has demonstrated, oh, he's a CTE director at Manual Tech, by the way. Mr. McNeil has demonstrated outstanding leadership from the moment he accepted the position of being the CTE director. He is hyper-focused on helping KCPS have the best CTE programs he can for all district students and helping every student attain industry-recognized credentials and market-value assets. In addition, he's always hard at work finding opportunities for teachers, office staff, and students to feel appreciated and feel like what they do matters, always humbly serving in any capacity. As a result, the staff generally feel a new kind of support rarely found in supervisors and much needed in our school-serving area. His goals are big, future-looking, and most importantly, centered around adding value to our students and inside-outside stakeholders. Having been within the KCPS school system for a little under a decade, it is essential to have and keep school leaders of the likes of Mr. McNeil. That is why I strongly believe that recognizing and honoring him and the exemplary service he has demonstrated is tremendously important as we move along towards Dr. Bedell's goals of being fully accredited and recognized for the top-of-the-line education in KCPS. One more. I love this one. This is nominated by Thomas Bazell, who's the culinary arts teacher at CTE. Mr. McNeil has such a cool and laid-back demeanor, always ready for any challenge and ready to work on implementing new ideas. He's an innovator. Congratulations, Mr. McNeil. All right, and last but not least, Ms. Jacqueline Tanner, principal at Primitivo Garcia. And Ms. Tanner's husband, Dennis, is here. Hello, Dennis. Mac there. Fan. All right, congratulations. So, Ms. Tanner was nominated by Donna Oster. This is what was said about Ms. Tanner. She has a good rapport with our students. She has handled this COVID year beautifully, even though it was your what year as a principal? First year as a principal. She had creative and out-of-the-box ways to support our families. We became more trauma-sensitive as a school under her leadership. We grew together as a team through regular communication and connection on our professional development Wednesdays. Ms. Tanner has been a huge addition to the culture and climate of our school, and we are so grateful for her creativity and her leadership at Primitivo Garcia. Congratulations. All right, photo time up here, ladies and gentlemen. Perfect. Ready, three, two, one. All right, and then next, Dr. Bedell and Mr. Hogan, we have Camila Alvarez, our photographer this evening, to come up and introduce our community champions. Good afternoon. I wear a lot of hats. Oh, okay. Good afternoon. Pull it down, okay. We're getting there, guys. This afternoon, we'd like to honor one of our community partners, and we have a quick video to show you, but first I want to bring up the Global FC team to receive our community champion award. And to say a few words, so you can say a few words before the video.
Hi, thank you guys so much. This is an honor. On behalf of our wonderful volunteer staff and our resilient and incredible students that we get the honor of serving, I want to say absolutely thank you. Global FC promotes the spirit of collaboration. We're passionate about that. We believe that we can do more when we have a collective approach, and especially this last year with COVID, that was powerfully seen, where we're able to be a bridge with the schools and the homes. As someone who went through the ELL program, as a refugee student who came into the West not speaking a drop of English, I know how critical the school is and the foundation of just what you get that. At first time, where I was encouraged, felt safe, as well as the first time someone told me that they believed in me, and that is my way of being able to, you know, just walk alongside these kids, and we would not be able to do what we do without walking with you guys. So, we just want to say thank you, all the teachers, so many familiar faces. Mr. Davis, Camila, everybody have been incredible champions for us, and we just want to really honor them as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay, three, two, and then one more phone, one more phone. Three, two, perfect. Thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name is John Parker. I'm the Director of Coaching for Global FC. Global FC was created in 2014 as an answer to the refugee crisis that was happening across the country and especially here in Kansas City. We knew that soccer is an international language that all these kids speak, and we used that to form Global FC Football Club. We describe ourselves as a football community, and it takes a lot of people in a community to make it all work and for everything to run smoothly. Our soccer program has gone from 12 kids playing on a bumpy field with torn-down nets and goals that were falling over to eight teams with over 190 kids from 29 different countries. It is amazing to watch these kids from all these different nations come out and do one thing and speak one language, and that's soccer.
My name is Patricia Carter, and I'm the Director of Mentoring here at Global FC. Our mentoring program uses a three-fold impact model. Impact on the youth, impact on the mentors, and impact on the community. My favorite part about partnering with the Kansas City Public School District is strengthening our relationship with the greater community in the Northeast and our strategic investment into Global FC players and their academic journey. Our partnership with KCPS gives us the opportunity to serve students that are enrolled in Kansas City Public School District in a mentoring capacity. Global FC works hard to encourage and bring accountability to all of our players in the area of academics, attendance, service learning projects, and reducing negative behaviors. We are thrilled to be able to prioritize students referred to us by KCPS teachers and faculty. And at the end of each year, KCPS supplies Global FC and other mentoring partners with a data report that highlights strengths and areas for growth.
Global FC first officially partnered with KCPS in 2017, and now we have a multi-layered partnership with KCPS through our soccer, mentoring, and education departments. We've worked with a multitude of different KCPS schools which our students attend, including but not limited to East High School, Northeast Middle School, Gladstone Elementary, Garfield Elementary, Wheatley, James, Whittier, J.A. Rogers, Northeast High School, Lincoln Prep, Paseo, Hale Cook Elementary. Our partnership with KCPS is meaningful to us because we truly believe in the power of collective impact. If each of us only worked alone, we would all be doing twice the work with half the impact at best. This partnership allows us to do more together because Global FC is supporting and supplementing the work being done by the schools while simultaneously receiving support and assistance from the schools in what we are doing.
All right, Mr. Chair, Board, member of the Board, and community member, that will conclude our first portion of the superintendent's recognitions. And we want to thank each and every single one of you for all that you do to serve the children inside of the Kansas City Public School District. Let's all give them one more round of applause. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is just a couple of quick updates, quick superintendent announcements. The first being on summer school. We do want the community to know that summer school is moving along pretty well with our planning. We believe with the addition of being able to hire substitute teachers that we'll have an opportunity to make sure that those who have signed up for summer school as of May 24th will be in classes with teachers that will be working with them through the duration of summer school. So, we met today. We feel good about where we're heading. There is a waiting list of a lot of families. There is a waiting list of a lot of families that are still looking to enroll their kids into summer school. If we have children that don't show up over those first two days, we'll start to then work on that wait list. But the reality is, everybody, a lot of our teachers, it's just not us. It's teachers all over. Many of our teachers that we would need to supply the amount of demand for summer school, it's just not available. We will make sure that we deliver on those that did sign up by the May 24 deadline. So we're happy to announce that. We are also looking at wanting to put out an announcement tomorrow regarding July 2. We've never had summer school to go this far into July. We always include summer school by the end of June. And so this year, knowing that July 2 is a Friday, we anticipate that not only are we going to have significant issues with teachers, we're going to have significant issues with attendance because many of our families are going to get their July, 4th of July weekend started. And so we've talked to the union, and we've spoken with teachers and other folks that will be associated with summer school. We believe that that's a day to also show our appreciation for all of these teachers that have signed up for summer school, that we should gift that day. And we will put an announcement out that we will not have summer school on July 2 so that people can be able to enjoy their holiday weekend and our teachers can have a four-day weekend. That will also include that Monday as the observance for the 4th of July. So we wanted to make sure that we we made that announcement to the board and to the community, that the administration is looking to do that, and didn't know if there were any questions around that before I give the last update on a TIF project. Okay.
Ms. Buckner?
I didn't hear you say, I don't know if you said this, how many students we have signed up for summer school right now?
Dr. Davis, do you know, have that number off the top of your head? I know it it was well over 4,000. I know that.
Well, over 4,800, and we have over 900 on the waiting list.
Yes.
Communicates to those families.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, 4,800. Okay. Thank you for that. And then the last thing I have around my announcement, I wanted to bring Kathleen Pointer up. This will be a quick update on a development that's taking place with economic development with CATS. And as you all know, CATS, K-A-T-Z. And and we've been very adamant on these economic development projects and our concerns. So we wanted to update you all on the latest development that's happening with that real quick.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Thank you, board. The CATS redevelopment project is at Westport Road and Main Street. It involves the old CATS drugstore. During the evaluation process, the SB Friedman Report, which is the independent financial analysis that's conducted to test the BUT4, to see the incentive level needed on a project, showed that the project needed just 10 years of assistance, which KCPS was ready to support. We've supported similar projects at a 10-year rate. On Monday, however, we found out that the council will be considering a 25-year abatement instead of a 10-year abatement. We have concerns about that. One of the things driving this, these abatement costs in general are the higher-than-market-level amenities, most for the tenants only. That includes a virtual golf room, a rooftop pool, a bowling alley, et cetera. The rents are also starting at a thousand, more than $1,000 for a studio. And this property is also located on the streetcar line, which the developer did not take into account. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We expect this project to go before committee next Wednesday.
Any questions? Oh, Dr. Jones?
So I know this is, in general, this topic has been pretty hot over the past year. Do we have any plans to engage some of our supporters to show up at that committee meeting or in general speak out on this project?
Sure. We will be offering public testimony on Wednesday, talking about our concerns with this higher ask. We do expect to see folks out there supporting at the 25-year rate. Historic Kansas City has sent out an email asking for their supporters to show up at the 25-year rate. We will put information in our advocacy e-news about it this Friday, letting people know about the upcoming hearing and what the KCPS position is.
Mr. Barker?
Yeah, this is fun. So this is a challenging one for me personally, right? I mean, representing the historic Northeast, especially being a proponent of historic preservation, I think the developers are getting wiser about their approaches and the bundling of their circumstances here. And so it is a challenge to see that they're asking for the 25-year rate. And I applaud the district and everyone's efforts to try and come to some level of compromise. So I hope that compromise is still an opportunity. And I will advocate for some level of preservation as one of the mindsets and approaches that we should consider as as an important element within development within the communities. I will never stand against the district in the collection of property taxes, but wanted to make sure that that was known.
Any other questions, Ms. Cortez? No? Okay, I would just say, so I'm sorry, give me, give me the location again.
So it's where Westport Road ends at Main Street. It's the old CATS drugstore building.
Okay. And so you, I know you mentioned you're going to put it in the newsletter.
Yeah, we'll send out an advocacy e-news this week, letting people know. We just found out on Monday that it was going at the 25-year rate instead of the 10-year rate that the financial analysis said is appropriate.
Okay. Are we going to reach out directly to to some community partners in addition to that letter? So thinking more Square and some other organizations that can help support us in this?
Yes. And I've heard from, you know, several of the groups. The TIF Watch Group contacted us earlier today. And so we think some of those other groups, I know KC Tenants has concerns about this project as well. So I would expect to see several community groups out there in addition to KCPS or other taxing jurisdiction partners, the library, the mental health fund, the county. I would expect them to testify as well.
Okay. And folks can always call their city council person as well. And that's probably one of the most important things that we can do is reach out directly to our council people. Ms. Wolfsey?
Will you be sharing with the board in our Friday update, the Friedman analysis, so we could read it ourselves?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm happy to do that.
Any other questions? Mr. Barker?
Yeah, one quick question. Kathleen, can you tell us what the level of support from the neighborhoods surrounding that development? I know they were, when OPUS came up, they were very opposed to that development. Where do they stand now?
So the South Moreland Neighborhood Association, from what I understand, has expressed support of this project at the 25-year rate. It is our understanding that some information is going out that this financial analysis isn't completely accurate. However, this is the independent financial analysis the EDC uses on every project. All financial information included comes directly from the developer. So any information that is going around that's being circulated would be outside of the Friedman analysis. Just addition here. So Kathleen Pointer, if she hasn't introduced herself, is a fantastic addition to our team. Kathleen has put together, for context, a website on our KCPS website that talks about incentives, what's currently coming down the pipe, how we feel about it. Includes articles that we've commented in previously. And so again, for context, this is just one more addition and one more conversation as part of the larger collection of projects we've been looking at for the past however many years. And Dr. Bedell's publicly taken stances, Kathleen testifies at city council quite often about these projects. We have Shannon Jacks, who also supports that. Just wanted to have, make sure we had that context for why this is a project that we're talking to you about this evening.
And I know I'll come back. I'm about, I'm going to pass it over to Jennifer Wolfsey, but I will come back to the board just to make our announcement on our TIF appointment. Representatives, we'll make sure that that information is available for the board. But Kathleen, in her training over the last year, has been phenomenal with your growth. And we will be moving to appoint you to represent the school district as one of our TIF representatives. But we'll get that information, just the announcement out at the next board meeting. Okay? So Ms. Wolfsey? We passing it back to Mr. Hogan? Okay.
Hot potato. If we could just lean into our mics a little bit, I guess some of our mics aren't picking up all that well. So just a friendly reminder.
How's this?
Do you have a question?
Nope. I'm going to transition so that we can move on to. It's my pleasure now to introduce some folks, if you guys don't mind coming up. The two folks from John Barjé and Associates, actually Principal John Barjé and Chris Ropie. We have, KCPS has been working with JBA annually since 2017, but even before that, on an as-needed basis. So they have been around for a while. We're very fortunate to have them representing our interests in Jefferson City. And it's because of their strong relationships and deep experience, we've been a successful, it's funny to say successful, but we're always in the negative kind of way. But as we are, as we have in navigating some extremely challenging legislative sessions of late, their collaborative approach, candor, and insight is very much appreciated. And we are lucky to count them as part of Team KCPS. We have asked John and Chris to come tonight to just provide a quick overview and debrief of the recent regular session with just some time at the end for questions, for any questions the board members may have. So John, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wolfsey, and Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and welcome to the two new members that I had the pleasure of meeting just before you. I'm John Barjé. I'm the principal of John Barjé and Associates. And my colleague, Chris Ropie, will dig into a little bit more of the meat of some of the legislative issues. For the benefit of the two new members, John Barjé and Associates is a governmental affairs and lobbying group specializing in state and local, just in the state of Missouri. We have a number of clients, and we have been operating for over 37 years in the state of Missouri. And please feel free to contact us, Chris, if you have any questions along the way. I do want to thank the board for the opportunity and the privilege to represent the Kansas City Public Schools. We are very honored and feel very blessed to do that in Jefferson City. Having done this for about 43 years, I can tell you that I am never amazed at the level of interest there seems to be in education, K through 12 education in the Missouri Legislature. It's been that way ever since I started lobbying. Various groups, whether they're charter schools, public K through 12, private schools looking for vouchers, other interested parties. And then we also, of course, always have the retired superintendents and retired teachers that become part of the legislature, and don't they have a lot of ideas? So when you put the whole mix together, the legislative process does become one that sometimes is very challenging when groups or individuals don't go and vet their ideas with individuals before they bring them to the legislature. And it causes a bit of angst when people are starting to think, oh, everyone knows about these things, and in reality, they don't. We have tried, and any initiatives that Kansas City Public Schools have asked us to do, to talk with the other interested parties prior to anything being introduced. And we try to vet those things with various legislators. Having had the opportunity over these years to work with a lot of elected officials, I think we have a good respect for the challenges that elected officials like yourselves face. On behalf of myself and my colleagues, I do want to thank you for having the courage to put your name on the ballot. I certainly have never had that kind of courage. I enjoy working with a lot of elected officials, but I do know it's not pleasant sometimes. And so I appreciate your efforts on behalf of the individuals and citizens of the Kansas City Public Schools. This legislative session was very challenging in a number of ways. And it is still not over, as Ms. Cortez and I were talking about. There will be a special session to try to deal with some budgetary issues surrounding the federal reimbursement allowance. I do not believe we're going to have to face specific K through 12 issues in any of the special sessions. I think Chris noted earlier that the governor informed some people that he has had requests from legislators for 13 various topics they'd like to have special sessions on between now and January. I don't think that will happen. I'm going to let Chris talk a little bit more about the specifics we're involved in. But I do want to take the time to express a deep appreciation on behalf of the five lobbyists in our firm that work on behalf of KCPS to Dr. Bedell, Ms. Wolfsey, and Ms. Quinley, who, poor Linda, ends up coming to Jefferson City for an hour meeting, and we let her go home two days later. And sometimes it's 2:00 in the morning when we're saying, no, you're not driving back. Ms. Wolfsey, Dr. Bedell end up on phone calls with us at 7:00 a.m. in the morning and 8:00 at night. And we're always privileged and honored to talk with all of you when we're back to having trips to Jefferson City, as we used to do pre-COVID. With that, let me just, I know you're pressed for time. And let me just turn it over to Chris to talk about some of the specific issues. Thank you so much.
I know you got a full agenda, so I'll try to get through this pretty quickly. And there's no way we can, we need six hours to cover just education issues alone as they work their way through the legislature. You know, tonight, what you all have done, recognizing these students and teachers, administrators, is what you should be focusing on, like John said. But unfortunately, Jeff City and the legislators that get elected from all over our state want to meddle in not only education issues, they want to meddle in your education issues. And we've seen that time and time again over the past five years, that I've been working on your behalf, where you have folks from outside of the Kansas City School District who want to, you know, develop and work on legislation that will impact you. That's where we come in, and we try to facilitate what your priorities are as the board and how you come up with those year to year. And Dr. Bedell and the rest of his leadership team that we have the privilege to work with and try to work through those issues. We, you know, I feel like we know the right people to talk to because if you look at 197 legislators in Jeff City, I think 12 of them represent the Kansas City School District. So you've got a whole lot of people from around the state of Missouri that don't know the history here, don't know the local politics, don't know how these issues are going to necessarily affect your community. And that's what you're elected for, and that's what you give us, the mission, to go and try to accomplish on on your behalf. And as was noted by Ms. Wolfsey, a lot of that is playing defense or getting you a seat at the table where those decisions are made. I think with, you know, relationships that we have, we are able to make folks from around the state understand that you need to do these things in the right way. You need to have the parties involved to have that seat at the table. And I think we've been able to do that for for your behalf. You can't just have one side of the the conversation to push forward with a piece of legislation because you need to have people talking and collaborating, figuring out how how to do things that are best for your school district and for your students. The best example is on this charter, what we call the local charter funding issue that has been around for the past several years. And kind of how, I'll touch on that real quick, and how we got to where we are today. You had legislation introduced two sessions ago without probably as much input as folks on this board would have liked to have had. And I don't know that there was a whole lot of interest at the time to seek that input. And I think folks thought we could get a bill passed, and not we, but that they could get a bill passed to address that issue. And fortunately, we were able to slow things down in order to have that conversation, which wasn't being had at the time. And once, once that happened and folks started engaging, we had a really good, really good process. I mean, I can't tell you the number of hours that Linda and I spent on the phone or her coming to Jeff City because besides healthcare policy, education, finance, and all of that is extremely complex, and you need the expertise of people like Linda to help help work through that. And there, there were a lot of things that people weren't thinking about that needed to be thought about. And I've learned more about special education funding and how that works and and know way more than I ever thought I would have as we try to figure out what's the right way to do this for the Kansas City School District. And fortunately, I'm pleased to say we got to a place where both sides were very comfortable with how that issue would go forward. And because of unrelated issues, that was not able to have gotten across the finish line. But I know in our conversations on your behalf with folks from the statewide charter association, I believe they intend to go forward with the deal, the agreement that we had and that we got worked out this past spring or this this past spring going into next session. So we're in a good place to have that conversation continue. And folks, I think, will work in good faith to try to get that done and have it have it get across the finish line next year. And we'll see how that all plays out. You know, a few other issues to touch on. There's, I don't know, 2,500 bills filed every session. I would say 15% to 20% of those are probably education-related. So you can imagine the different ideas, like John mentioned, that people think they want, they want to work on. But a couple of those that affect you all specifically that we worked on. There was a bill passed two sessions ago that dealt with you as school board members and how long of a period you had as candidates to get signatures, get on on the ballot, and go through that process, where it would have narrowed it down to one week, which would probably be darn near impossible to be able to do all that. And we were able to able to work and advocate for the governor to veto that bill. And then the folks who were pushing that legislation, you know, as an oversight, it wasn't their intent, but worked with Bill and his team to come up with language that we were able to get passed this year so we could get that done in the right way where it didn't affect you negatively. The other side accomplished what they needed to, and you still have plenty of time to go through that process. ESAs, empowerment scholarship accounts, that was passed this year. And that kind of went through a curvy road of how we got there. And that kind of went through a curvy road of how we got there. There was a lot of deal-making that took place that is out of any of our control, and some things that happened that got that done. I know folks who worked on that issue, there are, you know, some safeguards that were put in place. I know a lot of folks did not want to see that legislation pass, but they were able to get it to a vote, and it did go into effect. And there were some good things, like increased transportation funding that were added to the legislation that were seen as positive, and some other things like that that we can get into more detail and happy to share that with you anytime that is needed. This idea of a charter recovery high school for alcohol and drug-dependent students. There were some folks trying to push that. And again, they wanted to take that idea and put it in the Kansas City School District. They wanted to do that because you have charter schools here, and the law allows for charter schools here, and they were going to take advantage of that statute to be able to do this, whether it was needed or the way that you wanted to run things and serve those types of students, you know, felt like you were adequately doing that, and this was trying to be forced through. And that happened during a time when we didn't have a state senator. Our two state senators, two years ago, both resigned from office. They were given gubernatorial appointments, and it was very hectic and chaotic to try to slow that bill down, to get some safeguards put in place so that could be done the right way. And I think our advocacy and work on that has shifted that issue now, where there are a lot of safeguards in place regarding that legislation, where they've got to get DESI approval, the school has to opt in. So you have to want that for your community, and if that's best for your community, that's great, and you should do it. But there's a process where local control can be back in place, which I think is a good thing for everybody. One other issue to touch on that's not going to go away, and I want to talk about this because I think there's an opportunity for some really good partnerships and collaboration to be done, and that's on property taxes. Whether it's personal property tax reform or real property tax reform, that issue's not going away. There are a lot of legislators in Jefferson City that want to see changes made to how we currently handle that in our state, and don't necessarily have your interests at heart when they do that, and that's their prerogative. But we represent you, and we're going to fight to make sure that your interests are represented. But that's an issue that affects your local charter schools and the traditional K through 12 system equally. You're both harmed by doing something that doesn't have the best interest of students at heart when you look at those issues. And so I think that's a wonderful opportunity to collaborate with folks around the Kansas City School District who are involved, whether it's a charter school, whether it's a traditional public school, to try to work together to make sure that you have good policies put in place, and that something negative doesn't happen that will, you know, eventually lead to hurting students. And the last piece that I'll touch on is, you know, community engagement is the most effective tool that you can have, whether it's yourselves as school board members, Dr. Bedell, and members of his leadership team. When members of the community are reaching out and have relationships with their local legislators, that's where they're going to know that it's actually important. And you can send John and I to go talk to them, and that's what we do. But then if they're hearing that from folks back home, that's going to have the biggest impact, and I would encourage you to try to develop that as much as you can, to have folks actually understanding some of these policies and how they are going to impact the students in your district. And we can work together with how we represent that to interested legislators, because you do, you said there's only, I think, eight or nine representatives, two state senators who represent the Kansas City School District, and them hearing from folks back home is critical and always going to be the best lobbyist that they can, you can have working on an issue. I don't know how much time we have left, but I can keep going, or we can answer questions. I don't want to.
If it's okay, I'd like to open it up for the board to ask any questions, if you have any for John Barge or Chris Ropie.
Ms. Buckner?
Hi, thank you for sharing that. So you named a few things, the charter recovery high school, community engagement, the property taxes, and then also ESA. I want to back up to that. You named some benefits of it. Can you give me some more specifics on that and how that affects us?
Sure. So the way I understand the legislation, and I'd be happy to, you can email you the actual bill, and you can look at it and see what you think about it. But it is a program that will start at $25 million. It's a tax credit, 100% tax credit program that has a cap of $25 million and can eventually go up to $50 million. And the way tax credits work in Missouri, that is money straight off the top. There's no, you can't stop it, you can't have enough legislators to say, I don't want to do this. Tax credits come off the top and are paid for first. So you're going to get $25 million to go to students who want to seek a different alternative education route, or their families want them to seek a different alternative education route. It is supposed to go to students who, I believe, have an IEP, have first crack at that money. And then if they're, that waiting list gets filled, and there's still 20, you know, there's money left from that $25 million, then I think it goes to students that are at a certain level on the federal poverty level, whatever percent that would be, who qualify next. And then if there's still money left over after all those students' needs have been met, then I think, I'd have to go back and look, I think then it's open for anybody, any student and any family who would want to take advantage of that program. And I think a lot of concerns are surrounding, you know, how many families who fall into those two categories I mentioned, you know, are going to understand the tax credit process, where they're going to be able to take advantage of that and be able to utilize that for those students, and that eventually you maybe get students who are already in a private school who will benefit from this dollars. And, you know, you can talk about whether you're taking money away from traditional education or charter schools or however it may be. Those are still state dollars coming from somewhere that can be used for anything the legislature wanted to, and they chose to put it towards these empowerment scholarship accounts.
It has passed.
It has, yes. It had, the governor still can either sign it or veto it. It has passed the legislature. Now it is up to him, and he has till June 4th.
July 14.
July 14, excuse me, July 14 to either sign it, veto it, or he could pocket veto it and not sign it, but let it go into effect.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Barca.
Thank you both. You've done a tremendous job defending us in a very tumultuous environment that has been not pro-public school, at least for Kansas City and St. Louis. I think that's fair to say. You know, I am very challenged as kind of the priorities that you mentioned, all-target funding for us, right? I mean, this is tax benefit for some at the expense of our revenues from school districts. And so, you know, it's critical for the public to truly understand that as we talk about some of these programs, as you just mentioned about this new scholarship fund that is well-phrased, hardly a scholarship when you take it out of the taxpayers' revenue. It's diverting funding from this district potentially. And so, you know, I'm curious as to why the state legislature is trying to solve problems without issues. It seems like there are special interests that are driving these discussions and not necessarily taxpayer concerns that are the focus of these issues, when we have statewide issues like Medicaid expansion that seem to be ignored. So I'm just, I wonder how we get to this point where we're defending this, and why not look at other sources of reduction of revenue versus kind of borrowing on these establishments to fund their pet projects?
You know, I would say you have the Speaker of the House, very powerful position in the legislature, the most powerful position in the legislature. You had a majority floor leader in the Senate, which probably the last month and a half of session is the most powerful, you know, politician, legislator over on the Senate side of the building, that this was a priority for them, for whatever reasons. And that's, you had, you know, the folks that are running Jefferson City, that this was important to them, and they put all of their political will and might behind it to get it done. And that's, I mean, that's how this controversial of an issue got across the finish line, is because it was important to both sides of the Capitol, and they were able to get it done. And, you know, you look at how you get enough votes to pass something like that. I mean, you'll notice that this, that legislation doesn't apply to anywhere in rural Missouri. A thing I failed to mention is that the legislation only applies to charter-class counties and municipalities that have 30,000 people or more. So a lot of rural legislators, I think, probably voted for it because they could tell people back home it won't affect our community. And so that's part of how they were able to put together the votes to pass it. And that's where, you know, it does affect your community, and that's where we're at.
Chris, I'd like to add one thing, and I really appreciate the question, Mr. Barca, and you're right on target. The truth be told, the education policy in this state is being set by chairmen of education committees that are not from St. Louis or Kansas City or anywhere near them. The campaigns of many of these people are being very, very well-funded by outside organizations who spend the interim talking to them about alternative ideas that are contrary to what I think the majority of the members of this board would feel. And as Chris said, it's politics. The Speaker of the House, as Chris said, did not have the votes to pass this bill until they started trading on the gas tax, and the gas tax wouldn't pass unless, and the people that favored that, that were pro-public school, were told, you're not going to get your, the ugliness of how the sausage is made was very apparent in this one.
Okay, no, good. Okay, I think, looks like we're all good. Hey, I know you guys have another commitment. Thank you for coming here and doing this. And I would just echo everything that Ms. Wolfsee said. Thank you guys for all of your help. Your job, not easy at all, and the relationships that you guys have there in Jeff City are so, so much a part of how we're able to be successful. And, yeah, one final point, and then I'll let you go. I'd say, man, if we can find a way to be on offense, right? Like, this whole defensive stuff, it sucks. It's terrible. It's not fun. And it just doesn't allow us to advance our priorities, right? We're just defending against others' priorities. So whatever you guys can do to help us be creative on that, I think it's helpful. Go ahead, Ms. Wolfsee.
I want to add, part of the way you get to kind of an offense is what you teed up with, we have got to get people to turn out. We know how people feel about public education in Kansas City and even in St. Louis. You know, I've been doing a lot of talking with the folks over there. We've got to do, we've got to get people in Jefferson City to talk to folks so they can hear straight from the people who use our schools and teach in our schools.
And I think there, you know, there should be some opportunities for offense if, I mean, this local charter funding issue has just sucked all of the air out of the room on the discussions in Jefferson City and all the political capital from everybody involved in it, that hopefully we have this, you know, this agreement that we can go forward with would be the intent of my understanding from you all and what we will represent going forward, and can keep that and hopefully get that issue resolved. So that's not what we're talking about, and we can figure out some ways to not just have to play defense and make sure that things are done in a fair way on that front, so.
Understood. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Bedell, I'll turn it back over to you for introductions of our budget report.
All right, the last item on my report will be the FY 2021-2022 budget review, and then we will move it over to the Board of Directors' report. As you all know, we have continuously updated this board throughout the entirety of our budget planning process, and we are now at the final stages of being prepared to bring to this board and the community a recommendation that will, in two weeks, to pass this budget so that we can move forward with the upcoming school year. So I will pass it over to Linda Quinley for this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening, Board Chair, Board members, and public. We are really excited to be here at this point, to bring you this document. Two weeks ago, we brought you the meat of our budget for 2122, after, as Dr. Bedell mentioned, many conversations around the process all year, that being the financial section. So we're going to quickly run through a PowerPoint with some highlights, and then in front of you, you have your binders with your final full document, and we'll walk through that real quickly once we get through this presentation. I would be remiss if we didn't start with a big thank you to everyone that it takes to pull this together, and that is our executive team, that is definitely our finance and budget team, and it is our board, it's our finance committee, it's our community, it's everyone, and this is accumulation of a significant amount of collaboration and work. So as we, maybe I don't have, maybe I have to turn this on. Let's start there. Okay. I'm not going to read these to you. You've seen most of these, and I'm hoping that our public has had the opportunity to see a significant amount as well. This is just a short, condensed version of our 2122 budget timeline. You'll note that this one goes past June 30th, because truthfully, some of the things that we assume and project inside the budget aren't known until later. And one of those things is the setting of the property tax rate and final assessed valuations. So we just show you that this really is a continuous cycle as we move along throughout the year. Our budget guidelines, these are really our internal directions as to what things are going to be important to us during the work, that we really want to use as part of the process. And then our administrative goals, we've talked about these several times, focusing on compensation and benefits for our employee. We are really excited that we've reached that goal of opening the Newcomer Center next year at Woodland, and so we, that's taken us a couple of years in budget work to get to. Continuing work in career and college readiness, our special education programs, social emotional needs, pre-K, again, expanding pre-K for our third year in a row, district support behind pre-K, after a really significant loss several years ago of the Missouri preschool grant that used to fund a large number of classrooms for us. And so additional resources for marketing, as we intend to intentionally grow enrollment. You also remember from our last presentation that we did make roughly $4 million in reductions, about 147 positions, among other things, because we're working to become more efficient operationally so that we continue to focus on what's happening in school buildings. Expanding virtual ed and other learning options, such as night school, is part of this program. Interventions, professional development, and then making sure that what we're doing is sustainable long-term. This is just a nice little snippet. This is a slide that KCPS has put together long before I got here, that I actually copied when I was in Columbia, when I was watching you all my last year before I came up here, because I just love this page so much. Just important information, because numbers do drive the budget, although at the end of the day, and where we really want to focus is students, but numbers matter. So these are some numbers that are important to where we are as a system. I think our student membership, they're in the middle. As a reminder, there is enrollment, and there is membership. Enrollment are the kids on the rolls, and membership are the students who show up in that September count and that January count during a succinct window of counting. And so those are, that's used for funding. It's always a lower number than our actual students. So this is just several numbers that I encourage you to look at as we think about how we get to where we get in our final budget project, product. Again, enrollment, because it's so important. This is trend data on where our enrollment has been. You can see we are projecting for 2122 a decline from this year. That relates to a variety of things. Significantly, we know that kindergarten and first grade appear to be down across the country yet again, and we know, we do this projection work. David Rand's team does this in the data division, looking at charter growth, charter expansion, what families are choosing. So this is some trend data based on that. We hope, of course, that we see considerably more children next year. An important component of funding, the most important, and we talk about this a lot, you hear Mr. Barca talk about it every time he presents the treasurer's statement, current property tax carries the lion's share of our budget. It's a little bit of a misnomer just because of how DESI works and funds, and we'll talk about that when we look at a later slide. But the truth of the matter is, when you look at our financials, 82% of our operating budget comes from current property taxes. Sales tax, that Prop C sales tax is another large number, and then delinquent property taxes. So these are our three most significant local lines of operating revenue. Property levies, for us, that setting the property tax is different than everyone else. We've talked about that a lot. It's such an interesting story. It's one of the things that legislation tried to put upon us last year, that we had to fight to beat someone not from Jackson County, not from KCPS boundaries, who came to try to address this. But really important for us to look where we stand compared to our peers. As you all know, we have a flat rate year after year of $4.90, almost six cents, per $100 of assessed valuation in the operating fund. We have zero debt service levy, and that relates to the facts that we've not passed a general obligation bond since the late 1960s, and that's where that a general obligation bond since the late 1960s, and that's where that levy would come from. And you can see just as our peers and some comparisons across the state, and then that Missouri average at the bottom. So our total levy is higher than the Missouri average. We remember that that does include about 450 small districts who tend to always have smaller levies and a little heavier reliance on state funding. But when you look at what's happening in the Kansas City area, those first eight lines, you see that we are by far the smallest overall property tax levy inside the metro. Assessed valuation and property taxes are such an important component of our budget, because again, this is the largest single line of our revenues. When you look across the middle there in bold, you see that total assessed valuation. So you see those numbers changing. Next year, our increase is about $121 million in assessed valuation. That is not revenue, of course. And as you look straight up above in that far right column, the 2021, what's so interesting is that of the $121 million increase, $146 million is coming from residential properties because of the reductions in ag and commercial. And that relates to a variety of things. Significantly, COVID impacts an economy, probably. When you go down to the very bottom, you see net annual revenues. We are projecting $11 million in increased revenues using an 87% collection rate and the same property rate for this year. Proposition C revenues, this is the one cent sales tax for the entire state of Missouri, intentionally and specifically for public education. The, DESI gives us those estimates. We start getting those around March, and then they change them in April, and then they change them in May, and then sometimes they change them in June, based on really what's happening with actual collections across the state. Really interesting, I think this is really interesting on that top line. If you look at 1819, the actual amount per pupil and every, or per WADA, weighted average daily attendance, every school in Missouri gets the same amount per WADA. $1,007 in 1819. We're going to hit probably, early on, they told us $1,040. Now, there's a significant amount of excess revenues in the state of Missouri this year, and we're probably going to hit $1,048. Although they've held tight on $1,047 next year, but trends are telling us that that may be a conservative estimate, but it's what DESI's using, and so therefore, it's what we're using. And then you can see, when you come down one, two, three, four lines, it says increased/decreased from previous year. We're basically flat, even though the dollar amount's going up $7. And that relates to that the calculation ties back to your prior year WADA, and so we've got a little bit of a decrease there. Here are those state sources of revenue. And again, as I said, the state foundation says zero. And this is because it's really about how cash transacts through the state. We do earn state revenue. However, it's held back in order to pass the local revenue shares to charter schools because it's the mechanism that DESI can use to do that, right? And so we show zero state revenues on our financials. Charter schools show zero local, but we're really both getting some of each. It's a net-net on either side. No Classroom Trust Fund for the same reason. It's a component of the foundation formula. And then transportation, 1.2% of the operating budget. It was interesting what Mr. Ropey was saying, that the ESA bill is contingent upon moving transportation funding to 40%, and it can't kick in until that 40% mark happens. We've been fighting for the 15 years I've been in public education to get higher than the 19% funding rate, although the Constitution of Missouri says it will be 100% funded in Missouri in the annual budget. We've been fighting to get above 19% for 15 years. And next year, in order to get this bill passed, they agreed to go to 40%. So magically, we're going to double our revenues for transportation. We didn't plan that in this budget because it was still kind of waiting to happen, and we'll wait and see if it actually does. I'm not going to read through these. These are pages within the budget that you will find as you look through. But we've put in here by function, which is how you use things, our lines of expenditure, where it says FTE, that's full-time equivalent. So that's the staff behind those dollars. And you can see it by fund, because we are obligated, as we've shared many times, to budget, report, and compare by fund. So as you look through these few pages, I think the key item, it's all interesting, of course, but in the middle of, whatever this slide number is, we've got so many numbers on here. I think we've covered it up, looks like 32. In the middle of 32, you see total expenditure projection in the far right, 300 million. So basically, this is a $300 million budget that we're bringing you this evening, inclusive of all the funds. Just below that, you see that we are projecting and proposing a budget that spends $6.5 million into reserves, 5.5 of that coming out of the Capital Projects Fund, which just as a reminder, once revenues are in there, they cannot be pulled out for other purpose. We can't pull them and pay salaries or do anything like that. And a million from the operating budget. When you get down a few lines lower, you see ending fund balance, 58 million for the general fund and 75 million for all funds combined. We get in the document a little bit, we're going to give you a little more information about that. But nice, solid fund balance percentages, over 27% for the operating budget. Summaries, you've seen this several times, and again, it's in the financials for the public to see. The full financials are available out on Simbly now. If we have public watching and they want to go look through these, we've made them available to you. But this is just by type of work we're doing, our plan for next year, showing how we spend that money. And again, you see in the far right, close to the bottom, an expectation to spend 5.5 million more than we're bringing in, only because this fund starts with a nice, high fund balance, and we're very comfortable doing that. And a big part of it is continuing projects that have already begun, such as Woodland Phase 2. So I'm going to jump into the book, unless you have questions before we do that, and just take you through a few of the highlights that I think you want to look at. And I'm going to keep moving. Just in case you want to dog ear your pages, this is a lot of, a lot of reading, we know that. But we believe that the additions we've made over the last few years really helped the document be more understandable for those people who don't like looking at just 40 pages of numbers. So right inside your cover, behind the front page, you'll find your table of contents. So if you're looking for some information specifically, I'd reference you to this page. It's on a nice cardstock so you can get it. As you flip it over to the small roman numeral I, the back of that table of contents, you'll see supplemental section, tab seven. That's a new section that we'll look at, that we've added this year as we continue to work on this document, make it valuable to you. Behind tab one is the executive summary, which is, I'm going to put this clicker down before I click into somebody's presentation behind me. Really an important part. I want to encourage all of you to really read this summary. This gives you an insight into the what, the why, the how, and what does it mean of the numbers that follow. So the first page comes as a message from our superintendent, and then the next several pages are our executive team summary. And I'll point out, just as you flip through it, so in that team summary, on page six is there, of course, it's all valuable before, so I want you to read to page six. But pay particular attention on page six, the best budget message. It's very educational, we hope, about the process, the requirements, and how certain things are done. And then, as you get past the message onto page nine, we start revenue explanations and expenditure explanations. So this helps, we hope, break down some of the complexity of the various types of revenue, by fund sometimes and collectively. So these are pages, and what you will find, if you lay the financials next to this, is you're able to read through these and read through those financials and kind of help yourself understand the financial statements a little better. A lot of good information in this revenue and expenditures pages. A little bit about debt, a little bit about our planning and forecasting. Last year, on pages 20, 21, and 22, 23, 24, we started adding some information about who we are and who we serve. And so take a few minutes to look at a little bit of student achievement data, our highly qualified staff data. There's some really fabulous statistics on here, something new. Four of our reading interventionists became nationally certified this year. And so just really looking at who's serving our students every day. On page 24, you see a little bit of a different look at projections for enrollment. Tab two is sort of some of the, it's just sort of the basis behind the work, our budget timeline, again, our budget goals, and a little bit of information, the map of the district, so you can look at where we're serving. Tab three, you've seen this now for, I think this is the third year, that we've put in the tiered funding approach to staffing our schools. And Ms. Thompson added a nice page two that shows you a little bit about how the, what the targets are for creating equitable staffing levels. And then those pages that follow are the individual building staffing plans and extra dollars that are available to them, such as title or signature funds and those kinds of things. Tab five are the financials, and you've looked at them several times. I'll always encourage you to particularly in the financials, I'm sorry, tab four, did I say tab five? In the financials, I'll always encourage you to look at page six and seven. They are really nice summaries of the total. There's a lot of detailed numbers behind here, so those are important pages. On page 42, some pages that we added last year, break down sort of by department would be a term. It's really DESI's function code, some historical data, and some information on why that particular division's expenditures may have gone up or down, such as additional staffing or something like that. So it just supports the previous pages in a little more detail. Tab five is the very detailed capital spending plan that you've looked at a couple of times. Tab six is Budget Amendment 2 for this year that we'll be bringing at the June meeting as well. Ms. Thompson will walk you through that and talk to you about how those numbers came to be and why they are and what they mean. We did intentionally, at the request of the Finance Committee, springboard our budget for next year off of Amendment 2 versus Amendment 1 because it's more current, it's more accurate as to what we think this year's going to actually be. And so it's important for you to have that, I think, as you look at the financials. And the last tab, the new tab, this is driven largely by your Finance Committee with some requests they made as we've been looking at this and talking about it over the last several months. The first few pages are detail for our public and for you on the plan for how we spend the SR2 funds of $29 million that come to us next year. Page four is a new page requested by the Finance Committee as well, talking a little bit about what is fund balance. And we commonly talk in percentages, and so this helps you understand what it is, how you calculate the percentage, and where we stand as to a reasonable or unreasonable fund balance. And by the way, ours is reasonable, very appropriate fund balance. Tab six is a little greater detail on the debt that we have on the books. So you can see by issue, we have four, one, two, three, four, five, four outstanding issues, and you get to see a little better there, when those pay off, what the annual principal and interest payments are. So again, some new information. And then special thanks to our data team again for the last three pages of the supplemental section where we're bringing you some new information about performance, because what we believe is the commitments that you've made to us and the requests you have honored when we've come to you with budget requests over the last several years are reflected in results in these pages. And so we think they're an important part of this document.
Apologies.
You were reading deep, I could see.
Yeah, I was, man. Thank you, Ms. Quinley. Any questions? Mr. Arbarga.
Just one statement, and I think Ms. Quinley, obviously, and her team did an amazing job preparing this book for us to the public. There are some public documents that are available to look at. This is a draft budget, so there are things that still could change, but would strongly encourage the public to engage in this process and understand school budgeting processes. As John Barjé and associates had mentioned, this is a different environment than even corporate budgeting. So I encourage you to reach out to me, to Ms. Quinley, to other, my colleagues on the board as well with any questions or suggestions.
Ms. Cortez.
Okay, if there's feedback, I'd quit. Okay. Ms. Quinley, first of all, thank you to you and your team. We know that this is a product that is a 12-month lift, and it never stops its operation. But I really do want to echo one of Ms. Quinley's comments, which is really that there has been a really productive dialogue in the Finance Committee, and this, I think any final questions that people, that we may have will come up in our meeting next Wednesday. It's really not the focus of the meeting at this point, because the document in front of you is largely the finished product. But if there are topics that you want to raise, that's kind of one last opportunity to gain some information, is that meeting next Wednesday, so. But thank you very much for really the openness to kind of further educate us and the public about some of the things that are not easy to grasp. So, thank you.
Our pleasure.
And I guess I would echo all of that and then add on that if we have questions, let's get them to Dr. Bedell and Ms. Quinley in advance of next week, as far in advance as possible, so that they're ready to answer them or can answer them in advance of the meeting on the 23rd, so that we can actually move forward with approving the budget on the 23rd. Ms. Buckner.
Hi. We've had a lot of conversations around marketing. Where is that coded under?
Okay. Aaron, do you remember the function off the top of your head? We'll both look real quickly, and then we can tell you. So probably the best place to look is in the program. It's going to be a 2,000. Let me just a second. Okay. It's going to, it's folded in, in the administration lines, which are... So probably the best place to get some summary on it, because of how DESI codes, it doesn't fall out in its own entirely own function. But let me send you all the places you can find it. Now, if you'd like to have information more specifically on the marketing budget, we probably need to send that to you separate, because it does fold into administration under the, under executive administration, I believe, partially. So I'm going to send you a few different pages where you can look at that. But I wanted to look and see if under program... 91? Oh, and, okay, okay, yes. So those new pages, when you're in the financial section, Ms. Thompson says page 91. That's what I was looking for. Aaron, thank you. Admissions and Information Systems, it's included there. Yeah, so it's folded in here, but we can certainly, if the board would like, we can send you specifically, we can pull out and send you the marketing budget separately, because it's folded in some larger numbers here.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
All right. It looks like we don't have any additional questions. Thank you, Ms. Quinley. Appreciate it. Thank you, Aaron Thompson, and to the entire Finance Team, as well as Ms. Cortez and the Finance Committee. Go ahead, Dr. Bedell.
Mr. Chair, that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, let me lean in here. And we will just transition into the Board of Directors' report. And I'll just need to get to that page. All right. So I'm going to thank Mr. Townsend for being super patient and probably bored to tears. I'm surprised you're still awake, but I appreciate the fact that you are. And if you could approach the podium, sir. So Mr. Howard Townsend is here, is our guest. He is, he represents Kansas City Public Schools' interests as part of the Board of Equalization with Jackson County. This is your, I think you're wrapping up your second year?
Third.
Your third? Wow, your third year. Yeah, wow, it has gone really, really fast. And so we would like to, I'll just speak for myself, see you get reappointed as our representative for KCPS. I think you've been doing a phenomenal job. But I want to give you an opportunity to just talk a little bit about yourself and the work that you've been doing on our behalf, and then I'll open it up for questions in case folks have it.
Okay, well, good evening, Dr. Bedell and Board Chair and Board Members, Bill and June, nice to meet you. It's a pleasure to stand before the Board once again, especially the new Board Members, just to let you know that I'm making every effort I can to represent you in a very professional and proficient way with the BOE, Board of Equalization. The organization has been very taxed for 2019, as you may well be aware. Just to go back to numbers again, they had over 4,000 appeals, 4,000 plus. Not all was Kansas City. Not all was Kansas City, but they were still appeals that were put before the Board and we had to address. And that was usually a four-day week, eight hours a day. And the Assessment Department really, they really took on it. As far as about myself personally, I guess one of the proud things that I have to say, especially before this Board, is that I have five children that have all gone through the Kansas City Public School District, and they're all college grads, they all own their own homes. So I'm a very strong opponent for the Kansas City Public School System. I've been in real estate probably about, I'd say, a little over thirty-some-odd years. I have a broker's license in both Kansas and Missouri. I have a BSBA from the Rockhurst University with the major in real estate. I've also have completed some upper, upper grad work in Columbia, Maryland. So real estate is something that I really enjoy. And it's been a pleasure working for the Kansas City School District on the BOE. The BOE has three commissioners. Each school district is allowed to make input, and I must say they are very respectful of any input that comes from us and the representatives from the city. At that time, the Board then makes a decision on whether or not to approve or accept the assessed value that the Assessment Department has put forth. I also must say that we have some very knowledgeable residents in Kansas City who will come well-prepared to state their case, and that information is taken into consideration. And at that time, an assessment is awarded through the Board. I could go on, but I know it's been long in, in the night here. Are there any questions that I could answer specifically on what I'm attempting to do or anything about me personally?
One, one, real quick, just before we get to any questions we might have, one thing I just want to make sure the public knows, and the Board knows as well, so we put out a request to have others come forward and express an interest and apply to be appointed to the BOE as well. We did not get any, any responses from that, which is why you saw a note from the Board Secretary June last week, or maybe it was earlier this week, specific to, one, what are the responsibilities? Two, what's the time commitment? Because it is a, it is very a time, it's very much a time-consuming role. And then what are the qual, the specific qualifications that a person needs to be eligible to apply? And if we can, you know, whatever we can do to use our collective networks to help bring other folks forward, not necessarily to kick Mr. Townsend out, but we, it would be nice to have an alternate here as well, right? And so there, we know that there are others in the community that have the expertise and the desire to do this sort of work on our behalf. And so whatever we can do as a Board and the community who's listening to this can do to help us bring forward candidates for these sort of opportunities, we want to, we want to do that. So with that being said, any questions for Mr. Townsend? Mr. Barca.
Mr. Townsend, thank you for being here. Very important question that I'm sure you're going to have a quick answer for. How much do you get paid to serve in this position?
$150 per day.
Which eight-hour days is, makes for a long.
Right.
And that's not nearly the compensation that I would assume that we should be paying you for doing this service. So thank you for that voluntary service more than anything else there. I, I think that's, that probably pays for your parking, I'm guessing downtown, for eight hours. But I just want to express as well the protection of our very, very few dollars from, from this, this very important role that you play here, right? And, and I know that you are a guardian of our treasury, so I want to make sure and thank you personally on behalf of KCPS. So obviously, I'm in support of, of renewing his appointment.
Well, thank you. And as it was stated, Kansas City does have one of the lowest levies of all the school districts. So I definitely try to make sure that, if at all possible, and being very fair to the property owners, you know, that that assessment is awarded correctly. And I must say, I don't want you guys to feel that with me standing here that you're scraping the bottom of the barrel. I feel that my commitment is very personal from the standpoint that I love Kansas City. I've been on several boards in Kansas City. I've been on the Land Bank, the Land Trust, and also worked with the Executive Committees with Neighborhood Associations. I'm a past two-term Neighborhood Association President, so I understand those issues throughout our commi, community. So like I say, I stand here only from the fact that I'm just committed to serving my city.
I, I think you're, I personally think you're, you're handsomely rewarded for it, given our salaries as Board Members. But any other questions? Ms. Cortez.
Mr. Townsend, having, having been engaged with that process over the course of my career, I, I would share with you that your, your comment about fairness and is, your reputation for fairness is well-known amongst the community. And I, I really appreciate what you're doing on our behalf. And I have to admit that when I reached out to gain a little bit more information as part of trying to recruit some folks to support you, potentially as an alternate, that the amount of time that you spend over the course of the summer really is extraordinary. And it, it speaks to your, to your passion for KCPS, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Agreed. All right, well, do we have a motion to reappoint Howard Townsend to represent Kansas City Public Schools' interests in the Board of Equalization?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes. All right, the motion passes, and Mr. Townsend, you're reappointed to the Board of Equalization. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I'll move us along here. So this is really a little bit of a recognition point here, as well as a little bit of a public service announcement. So over the weekend, I, my wife and I had the opportunity to, to attend an exhibit at the Nelson Atkins Museum. And there was an exhibit there put on by the African-American Arts Collective here in Kansas City. So it was founded back in 2014. Some folks got around a table at, at Gates Barbecue and had a conversation around how they could better represent, support, encourage, and provide education and opportunities to artists, not just in Kansas City, but around the country. And I, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, we, we have one of our teachers here in KCPS who has work as part of that exhibit at the Nelson, which is very, very cool. Harold Smith is one of our arts teachers at Lincoln Middle. So I want to congratulate him for being a part of that exhibit. That's pretty cool, and it, I'm sure it'll have some national notoriety about it. But I also, it was, for me, it was really striking. And I kind of relate it back to when we think about the power that teachers of color have, not just on students of color, but on white students as well, right? You don't hear that talked about very much, but we know through research that's absolutely the case. And I think art has the same opportunity. Art produced by artists of color can have an impact on students of color and people of color in the same way that it can on white folks as well. And so I would just encourage the public to attend that. It's free, so there's no cost associated with it. It's running through March of 2022, and I think we're going to do a little bit of social, social media around it as, as well, just to let folks know if, if we haven't already. And so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there and encourage folks to go participate in that exhibit. All right, and then the next thing that I have is a conversation on our Board-only retreat. So this Board is getting together on June 26th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to do a retreat just with the Board. The public's obviously welcome to, to attend that as well, but it's just the Board, not administration. And so we, we solicited some proposals from several folks to do workshops for the first half of the day, really team-building, trust-building workshops for the Board, just to make sure that the Board, as we come together, we're working together effectively and developing a high-functioning Board. I provided those proposals to the Board on, I think it was Sunday. And so you should have those in front of you. There's one correction, though, that I would make is in the lively paradox proposal from Dr. Price. That amount should read $5,000, not $10,000. We do have money in our budget for this as well. And so I wanted to just open it up for conversations and questions if anyone wanted to talk through those two proposals. I had good conversations, just so that you know, with, with both, both Mr. M. as well as Dr. Price. I think they'd both be, be great at doing this work. And so I think it's really what this Board chooses to do collectively. Any questions? Ms. Wolfsee?
Sorry. So the, what is involved, the hours there, that part is the same, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, nine, nine to noon is the, is the idea.
Is the time, okay.
Do you, I guess, what were the goals, maybe, that you shared with each of them that helped guide the conversation?
Really, the, yeah, it's, it's a good question. I really just tried to have a, a similar conversation with both, which is, you know, it was a hard-fought campaign, right? And it was, and campaigns oftentimes are hard-fought. That's sort of the nature of the beast. You have to either love it or, or just kind of deal with it and get used to it. And it was a really hard-fought campaign, and, and it probably wasn't the most productive way to bring a team of folks together. You know, you think about politics in general, it's normally a person running for an office, and that person is going to be their own individual legislator. It's a bit different than folks running for a Board that's a collection of people that are then going to have to come together and, and work effectively. And so I shared hard-fought campaign, you know, in order for us to sort of get through that and move beyond the campaign, it would really require us to, to do some exercises that will help us build trust with each other. Because at the end of the day, I think we all want the same thing, right? Which is to improve educational outcomes for the students of this district. We may come at it from different perspectives, and we may have different ideas around how we get there. But if we're all focused on, look, there are 14,000-plus kids out there in this community that need us to be responsible, respective, professional, you know, Board Members and push this district in a way that's effective, then we've got to come together, you know, as a group. And so I just kind of shared that story, at least from my perspective, and I'd heard that from multiple Board Members as well, that we needed to do that, right? We needed to do it quickly. And, and so, you know, we're, there's a, there's a notion that this is not the end as well, right? So we should recognize that this is a workshop on a day that will last three or so hours, but it can't be the last time we come together and, and focus intently on building these relationships effectively with each other. Does that help answer your question? Any, Ms. Cortez?
Since you had a direct conversation with the two consultants and you have knowledge of the seven folks who were building into this team, could you share any observations? Would you be comfortable sharing any observations about who you think would support kind of our, our, our high-level objectives?
So, yeah, you know, honestly, I, again, I think both of them would do well. There was something about Dr. Price, her questions, the way she, she sort of, you could tell she was listening, listening intently to really understand, you know, how to structure the workshop, right? And she's got a lot of experience, they both have a lot of experience in doing this sort of work. But there was just something about the way she listened and her questions that made me go, man, she's digging deep already and causing me to think about things, and I'm not even in a workshop right now. I felt like I was in a mini-workshop having a conversation with her, which kind of blew my mind, honestly. And so from my perspective, I think she is, you know, she's probably the person that will help us get there faster than, than maybe Mr. M. will. It's not a reflection of him being not good, I think he would be fine. That was just my impression in talking to, to Dr. Price. All right, so it's, it looks like we don't have any other questions. Is there a motion to approve one of these two folks to, to conduct this workshop with us?
I'll make a motion for us to approve engaging Dr. Price.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, June, will you please call a roll? Any, well, real quick, just any debate? Okay, well, June, will you please call a roll? Yes. Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, the motion passes, and we've selected Dr. Nicole Price. Thank you, guys, I appreciate that. All right, well, let's move into our business items. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, these are just two items we had requested of the Board two weeks ago that we wanted to bring the summer school vendor partner agreements to you all to take action in the past. That generally would be done after summer school had started, and we are working diligently to try to get this stuff done before. And so we have the vendor partner agreements totaling $956,434. We are asking the Board to take action on this request. These are agreements with the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Kansas City, Kansas City Friends of Alvin Ailey, and Cherry Holding Company Entrepreneurships, KC. Each partner will provide direct services to students and receive payment per pupil based on attendance rate at the conclusion of summer school, I believe, Dr. Davis? The, they will receive their payments based on, per pupil-based attendance rate once we calculate the final attendance rates, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think we have, we do have one other that I believe, do we have one other that's coming to the Board in, at the next business meeting?
The other one with the city is no-cost, and it's an after-school program.
Okay, it's no-cost program, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any questions? Ms. Buckner?
So I'm looking at the money that's going into the, the entrepreneurship program. It's an elective course. I know it starts on July 14th, right? I wonder, like, how many students have signed up for this, if, if it's an elective? And then are we expecting all those spots to get filled? And if not, what happens to the surplus?
With our partner programs, they're really separate programs. We stand as the LEA for those. I'll have to look at the enrollment for our partner programs. They are not included in the 4800 that we mentioned earlier, but I can get that information to you. So the students who are signing up for the partner programs, whether it's the dance course through Alvin Ailey, we are really a pass-through. As the LEA, the reimbursement will come through the state to us. We subtract a fee, and then we'll pass that on to our partners. So I have not been monitoring their enrollment, even though I know the, the opportunity has been extended to students, but I can get that number to you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so a certain amount of money has been, has been set aside. I'm asking what happens to the surplus if all those seat, those spots aren't filled?
Oh, that money would just come back to, it would come back into the district's budget. You're talking about entrepreneurship?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was wondering, she's talking about like the slots we have for students that would be receiving paid summer entrepreneurship opportunities?
Yeah, because I saw it's like 350 students. And so, you know, I'm interested in like how much, how many students are signed up if this starts on the 14th? And then what happens to the rest of that money?
Yeah, so really, the, the partnership programs that we have are really at no cost to us. The, the partners secure their own funding to pay their teachers and to fund their programs, and then we'll receive the reimbursement from the state per the attendance, which will then go back to them to reimburse them. To your point around the slots, they did want to... to serve at least 300 students in the metro. This was open to not just KCPS students, but also students within our boundaries. And so I do not, unfortunately at this time, have the enrollment data with me. I do know that the majority of the students who have signed up are KCPS students. I do know that, that they are KCPS students, but I can get you that number.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Buckner, my apologies, because it's multiple entrepreneurship programs we have going this summer. There are, there are, the stuff we're doing, working with kids, but I think the one you're talking about is Ms. Cherry, the Cherry one that's 350 kids. So he's right, that is regional, and I believe it is based on the particular students that we, they're billed based on the students that they will serve from our district. That's how that operates with that budget. Sorry, I was confused.
Yeah, that was just what I was going to, like, you said, right, so it's no money spent until the students are actually enrolled.
And I just want to, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear on the summer offerings. So there's the traditional district opportunity, and that's what you updated us on earlier, and then the outside partner programs?
That's correct. We have the outside partner programs. What's not traditional is the number of internships that we're now providing to hire students to work within the district. That is, that's in addition. We may have done it in the past with maybe a handful of kids, but not to the scale that we're doing it now.
Got it.
So that's, that's probably the bigger piece that's being added to this experience this summer.
Got it. And then all of the partner programs are groups that we have historically worked with the last several summers?
That's correct.
Ms. Buckner?
Do these programs require us, require them to hire certified teachers? Because I saw language in there. Okay, so are we competing with them for our teachers with these programs?
We are not. So we only partner with individuals who are offering programs that we are not currently offering. And so with Entrepreneurship KC, for example, which is an entrepreneurship, of course, if we are to say next summer offer that, then we wouldn't have a third party to come in and offer that. Same with Alvin Ailey, who offers a dance course, even though Entrepreneurship KC, they're actually hiring certified teachers who work for KCPS, and so is Alvin Ailey. So they're offering a dance course, but they're, they're hiring the dance teacher who already works at Basale Academy. And then Boys and Girls Club, they are hiring certified teachers. Some of them could also be KCPS teachers who are just working in non-KCPS programs, but in partnership with us.
So I'm thinking about how we need more in-seat class time for our kids to make up for that unfinished learning and thinking about our traditional programs. So I'm asking, are we competing for teachers, right, for certified teachers? Because I know that's a need that we need to fill for our traditional summer school.
I don't believe we are, because Alvin Ailey just has the one dance class, and we're not offering that course. And same with the four teachers that are hired through Cherry. They're teaching courses in the business certified area that we're not offering. And then with, with Boys and Girls Club, we traditionally partner with them because they offer a longer program, and we know that an eight-week program works for many of our families. So we, we definitely share that as an option, so that there are multiple ways that families can provide education and keep their students engaged through the summer. To your question about competing for teachers, I do not believe we are. Again, they will hire some of our teachers, but they, they only have two sites. And so there's not a, a large number, not so large that we're, it'll keep us from getting that. So if they have eight more teachers of ours there, you know, it's not something that has been an issue in the past. This summer is a little bit different because of just the shortage nationwide, it appears.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, it looks like we don't have any additional questions, so I'll just kind of give a heads up here. I'm conflicted out. I serve on the board of Friends of Alvin Ailey, and so I'll have to abstain. But with that said, is there a motion on this one? And that we can, we can read the motion here? Will the board members have it? I can read it. The motion is the approval of the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2021 summer school vendor agreements with the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Kansas City, Kansas City Friends of Alvin Ailey, and Entrepreneurship KC program and budget cost to Kansas City Public Schools is an estimate, an estimated $956,434, which will be paid from 10.0450.1191.6391.1.21, and? And the budget, other purchase services budget. So is there a motion to approve that? All right, it's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I abstain. Why didn't you ask me? All right, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last business item is we're asking the board to take action on, to pass this resolution to support the Mark Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan that will be filed with the state of Missouri. The administration does support the efforts of this plan, and I think this is a plan in response to what we learned going through this national health pandemic. It's ultimately designed to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in the Kansas City Public School District from the impacts of future hazards and disasters.
All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan resolution to reduce our, reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in the Kansas City Public School District from the impacts of future hazards and disasters? So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez? Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. All right, Dr. Bedell?
Thank you. And so the last item that we have for the night is our workshop presentation on 1.1, our academic year wrap-up. Dr. Shepherd will get us started with this presentation. It will be co-presented by Dr. Philip Jones, Ms. Sherry Easton, and Mr. Jerome Williams. And so I think we're ready to get started here with our last presentation for tonight.
All righty. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Hogan, board members, and members of the community. Tonight, we'll be talking about board policy, monitoring policy 1.1. Waiting on me to do it. All right. All right, 1.1. So we have 1.1A, B, and C. Tonight, we'll be covering B. All scholars will demonstrate literacy, numeracy, critical thinking skills at or above grade level, both as a whole and by groups. Scholars demonstrating below-grade level performance will demonstrate significant growth each school year. So the metric that we will use tonight will be iReady. We do not have state assessment results at this time. Last year in 2020, our students did not, they were not required to take the state assessment. And so we have had our students to take the iReady assessment. And so a lot of the data that you will see tonight will actually come from iReady. And then we will also talk about board policy 0.0. It's always important for us to put equity, the equity policy in everything that we do, because we want to make sure that we always layer everything we do through the lens of equity. The two specific things that we will deal with tonight are, the first is, it is the commitment of the KCPS board to foster a barrier-free environment where all students have equitable access to excellent education within our schools. And so as you look at all of the data that we're presenting, and what you will see is, in every scenario, we're presenting it to you at tier one. You're going to look at the percent of students throughout the presentation that are at tier one. The reason why we're using tier one is because tier one is directly correlated to a student being proficient or advanced on the MAP test. So we want to always look at, as we look at board policy 1.1, which is about excellent education, we want to make sure that the results dictate that excellent education. And so that would mean that we would want our students to be at a tier one level on our iReady assessment, because again, that correlation is pretty strong in students by the time they get to tier one, and then how they're advancing and moving towards proficiency and advanced level on the MAP test. Then the next thing, the KCPS board holds itself and all KCPS staff accountable for building a culture of equity at all levels of our district in order to meet our responsibilities to the entirety of the students we serve. And so as you hear this data, you will hear it from the lens of the grade level, and you will also hear it from the lens of the socioeconomic, and then also you will hear from the race, the lens of the race, race subgroups. And so as we listen to this, at the end, you're going to hear my team come and talk to you about next steps, because we know that our work is not finished. Our work is forever evolving. And so as we present this data, we're turning the data inside out, upside down, having all types of conversation about, conversations about what needs to happen next. And so a lot of that has to do with the professional development that we will actually deliver to teachers. And so the team will actually speak to you about that professional development and next steps, and then at the end, we will take questions. And so the next voice you will hear is Mr. Jerome Williams, and he will come and present our iReady data.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Good evening. My name is Jerome Williams, and I'm the manager of research and assessment for KCPS, direct report to David Rand in the Accountability Office. So as Dr. Shepherd stated, we're going to talk about iReady here, but as we're talking about this data, keep in mind, this is just part of the story. You know, while it is encouraging for us as a school district, it's just part of the student's story, and it should be viewed through that lens. So the diagram that you're looking at right now is iReady reading, pre- and post-diagnostic screener, or what we call diagnostic one and diagnostic three. The triangle on the right is going to be diagnostic one. The triangle on the left is going to be three. The green bar is going to be your tier one students, right? So as you can see, from diagnostic one to diagnostic three, we went from 22% to 30%. So we saw an 8% increase in the number of students that were scoring in that tier one level. This is important, because as Dr. Shepherd stated earlier, tier one is going to be your students that are on or above grade level, right? As you're moving up the pyramid, you can see the yellow bar, that's going to be tier two. We went from 29% to 33%. And then tier three is going to be, at risk for tier three is going to be the red part of the triangle. And this is also very significant, because you see a drop from 49% to 37%. So we had kids that were moving out of that, that third tier and new the second tier, and that is very positive for Kansas City Public Schools. What we're looking at here is just a more detailed look at reading. So this is going to be performance by domain. There is a key on the right that will kind of explain, will explain to you what these acronyms mean. And then the chart on the left, what you're looking at are the reading placement by domain. Again, the same tiered approach, tier one, tier two, tier three. If you're looking at PA at the top, the wider bar is going to be diagnostic three, and then the one right underneath is going to be one. I know it's a little hard to read, but I think you can pick up here, just with the colors, that we saw an 8% increase from diagnostic one to three in reading. And when you break it down by domain, you're also seeing some gains in things like phonological awareness and informational comprehension. Where this data becomes important is, we can look at this, and we can identify maybe some of these areas that aren't as strong as others, and provide some more focused instruction for students in those areas. What we're looking at here is going to be a comparison fall to spring by grade level. One thing to note here, iReady is a K through eight program for reading and math, right? You don't see kindergarten, kindergarten data up here, because for the fall, we don't require kindergarteners to take this assessment, right? We usually do iReady very close to the beginning of the school year in the fall, and having a kindergartner sit down and take an online test probably isn't best practice. So we allow that to be optional for kids. There weren't a lot of kindergarteners that took the test in the fall this year, which is why we're not displaying that data. One other interesting thing here is, you look at first grade, fall 30.3%, spring 25.9%. This is something that we've seen nationally. The loss of learning was real this year, as everybody knows, specifically in grades one, two, and three. So that's not anything that's out of the ordinary from what we've seen in Kansas City, locally around Kansas City, and then in the nation. But as you go through the chart, you can see second grade, we saw a slight increase, third grade, over 10% increase, fourth grade, close to eight, fifth grade, about seven, a little over 7%, sixth grade, a little over nine, seventh grade, 5%, and eighth grade, 6%. So we saw some really strong gains by grade level using the iReady diagnostic one and three. Now, we're going to look at it by race. So we've got our subgroups here. We've got Asian, Black, Hispanic, multi is multirace, Native American, Pacific Islander, white, and again, KCPS, you see the 22 to 30%. Again, in each of these groups, we saw, we saw gains from the fall test to the spring test. I'd like to point out, you know, specifically Black students, we've seen an almost 7% gain. This is very encouraging, especially when you consider that Black students make up about 54% of our student population, right, which would be a little bit, a lot different than Native American. You're looking at this data, and you're saying, okay, an almost 8% gain for Native Americans, that's also encouraging. But Native American makes up less than 1% of our student population. So in this data, you're probably talking about 20 kids, right? We have provided a more detailed report to where you can go in and look at this information. It's broken out by grade level, by subgroup. We would never put that information out, because obviously, if there's only 15 Native Americans, somebody might know that that, one of those kids is that wittier in the fifth grade. So we do have some data for you, and we have suppressed cell sizes that are, that are smaller than 10. Right here, we're looking at, again, fall to spring comparison, ELL and IEP. ELL is going to be your English Language Learners. IEP is going to be Individualized Education Program, and again, compared to the district. This is also significant for a lot of reasons. You know, ELL, sometimes those students and IEP students need accommodations that, you know, quite frankly, we're not able to provide in a distance learning or remote type environment. So when they took the test in the fall, right, it wasn't necessarily set up for them in that regard. But taking it in the spring, again, you see an 8% increase for ELL and almost 4% increase for IEP. And for context, ELL makes up about 21% of our student population, and IEP close to 12. So this is also some really, really, really strong, encouraging data that we're seeing from that subgroup, from those subgroups. Now, we're going to move to math, and this is the same diagram that you saw with reading. Again, the green is going to be tier one, on or above grade level. Yellow's going to be one grade level below. Red's going to be two or more grade levels below. You can see from diagnostic one to three, we had a 9% increase in students that moved into tier one, 4% decrease in tier two. That makes sense. If you had a kid that was in tier two that moved to tier one, that's why you would see that decrease. And then a pretty significant drop in the kids that were at risk for tier three for math. Another look at math performance by domain. Again, you've got a key on the right, and the chart on the left is looking at each domain individually, comparing the third diagnostic to the first diagnostic. Again, that green bar at the top is longer than the one right underneath it, which is encouraging, and it's good. Again, looking at this data, we can go through, and we can say, hey, you know, you know, geometry maybe isn't moving as fast as maybe numbers and operations. What can we do in that domain to help increase student performance? We're looking at math by grade level again. We have omitted kindergarteners, again, because we did not require the fall test for them. Looking at first grade, initially, you look at that, and you see, okay, you know, 9%, 9% decrease, right? Again, that is in line with what we've seen nationally, when you talk about loss of learning. Just being a parent myself, I can tell you, sitting at home, it was much easier for me to tell my kid to go into the room and read a book than it was to sit down and actually help them with their math homework, right? So that's where a lot of these, these gaps that we're seeing, especially with math, that may be attributed to some of that. As we move through the chart, you can see that we've seen some increases from fall tier one to spring tier one, in every single grade level except for first grade. Again, very, very encouraging for our KCPS in our schools. We're looking at math data by race. You can see Asian had almost over a 3% increase, Black close to six, Hispanic over eight, multirace over 10, Native American decreased from 42.9 to 33.3. Keep in mind, that's not a lot of kids. It's less than 20 kids. Pacific Islander, almost 14% increase, white about 15%, and then the KCPS numbers there. And, you know, just to back up with Native Americans, you know, it may only be 20 kids. I just want you guys- I just want you guys to understand that context that we're only talking about 20 kids, but we are still talking about 20 kids that we need to figure out how we can better serve those kids, right? If that's, if that's a need. We're looking at ELL and IEP data for math. Again, ELL, we saw over 4% increase from fall to spring. IEP, close to 4% increase as well, which again, bodes well for us and tells a very positive story about what's happening in our buildings. What we've done here is we've taken a look at our schools based off of tier. So you've got your schools that are in tier one, your schools that are in tier two and your schools that are tier three. And then what we're looking at here is the percent of students that were above grade level. So that would be the tier one. The reason why I switched it up and put above grade level is so that you're not looking at the graph and it says tier one, tier one, right? So this is going to be the, the green that we were looking at earlier. And so you can see our tier one schools, about a 15% increase from diagnostic one to three. Tier two schools, 10%, over 10%. And then our tier three schools, almost 4%. Now there, our tier three schools are lagging a little bit behind when you're just looking at this particular data, but for me, this is encouraging because we're seeing an upward trajectory, right? In all three levels. This is the same data, but just we're looking at the red now. We're looking at the students that were at risk for tier three. And this is where you want to see that, that number decrease. So for our tier one schools, we see a 16.7% decrease from a diagnostic one to three. Tier two, almost 20% and tier three, close to 12%. Again, this is very encouraging data for our schools and it validates the work that we've been doing this year. Math, tier one, tier two, tier three schools. Again, we're looking at diagnostic one to three, which is going to be for tier one. It's almost over 16% increase. Tier two, almost 10% and tier three, a little over 4%. And now we're looking at the percentage of students that moved out of tier three, which is at risk or, you know, at risk for tier three, two or more grade levels below. Our tier one schools saw a decrease of almost 16%. Tier two, almost 21%. And then tier three again, saw a nice decrease from 60 to 46.1%. This graphic here is the same information. The only difference is we've added that one grade level below in there. So you can look at that and look at, you know, tier one schools, tier two schools, tier three schools and then scroll across and look at the percent of students that are on or above grade level, one grade level below, two or more grade levels below. If you look at the far right, you know, those columns are green and they're showing negative, but again, that's because we have moved kids out of that third tier when you're looking at one compared to three. So that is a positive. The negative in that column is a positive. And you can see they're all green or yellow. So that, that is very encouraging for our KCPS. So a couple of notes on iReady testing. So fall and winter testing were completed 100% online, right? This, this was new for everybody, the pandemic. Obviously, we're not the only ones going through it, it's the whole, the whole country. But fall and winter were completed 100% online. For the winter test, it was actually optional, right? So we, we gave schools the option to take that test. And I can tell you, a lot of kindergarteners that didn't take the test in the fall did take it in the winter. One of the reasons we made it optional was because this was such a challenging year and the winter window started in January, we were also trying to administer WITA, which requires that you actually take that test in a school building. So I want to give, you know, kudos to our language services department for pulling that off. I mean, organizing almost 4,000 kids to come back into a building to take a test when you're not even open, right? So we said, you know, let's just make the winter optional to help our schools out. We were also rolling out our interim assessments at the same time, which also provided some very important data for us and not just in ELA and math. It was all subjects in KCPS. We were also at the same time, developing a deep data protocol that some of my colleagues are going to talk about a little bit later. So we felt it was in the best interest of the buildings to allow them to have that winter test optional. Testing windows for KCPS, our fall window was September 21st to October 2nd. The winter window was January 5th to January 22nd. Some kids or some schools took a little bit longer than the 22nd and we allowed for that. And then the spring window was May 3rd through May 14th. This again is important because when you're talking about windows, you know, iReady has national norm windows. So you take a test in the fall, it needs to be fall. So whether you take it in October or September, it counts as a fall assessment. Our windows are only two to three weeks long, right? The iReady national window is going to be longer. Where this impacts us is with mobility. If a kid shows up after our window closes, right, he, that kid has to take the diagnostic in order to get a growth measure. And that diagnostic may be a little bit further out than when we actually administered our tests. So I'm happy to report that for fall, we tested about 85% of our kids and for the spring, over 90% of our students, which is, which is huge. Again, for the spring, we came back to school, I want to say April 26th, right? The spring window opened on May 3rd. So we're bringing kids back into the building while simultaneously giving them a high stakes exam and we still tested over 90% of our kids, right? It was also important to do this because we talked about mitigating the loss of learning. We did not sit for MAP last year. We did not take a spring iReady. So we needed data in the fall to not only project our growth measure, but also to provide data so that we could accelerate learning and help mitigate that loss of learning that we figured we would have this school year. We also created some great protocols for testing at home. Again, we wanted to make this test as high stakes as possible, which is literally almost impossible to do at home. But what we did do was we create a lot of protocols. We worked with our CIPD, Curriculum Instruction, Professional Development, School Leadership, Dr. Shepherd, the Digital Learning Team or DLT, to put together some really strong protocols to, to, to give to teachers and the schools to use to make sure that they were mimicking a test that would be high stakes because we knew we would be coming back and taking MAP at some point in time or even iReady. And the other big piece, we really utilized the iReady platform to its full capability or more to its full capability this year than probably have in the past. We did a lot of PD, again, with DLT, School Leadership, CIPD. We even had curriculum and associates in and we were, you know, scheduling individual training sessions with principals, teaching them how to use things like report groups, working with teachers on creating small group instruction. You know, all these things, I feel like had a, had a very positive impact on iReady this year and I think it's reflected in the data that we're seeing. So I'm going to now pass it over to Dr. Philip Jones in CIPD, which is short for Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development.
As my colleague alluded to, I'm Dr. Philip Jones and in this venue, the other Dr. Jones. So one of the things that I want to talk to you about is what CIPD is doing particularly to connect all of this together. And so this summer, CIPD will be providing targeted learning opportunities, not only for our teachers, but for our principals, so they could take all this, this data, all of these points that we have here and use them to guide building and classroom instruction. Now, the first event is going to occur in June, like the latter part of June. It's called Gear Up. And like Mr. Wilson, I mean, Mr. Williams alluded to, we have all of this data that comes from iReady. And, oh, sorry. We have all this data that comes from iReady. And the thing about it is, in addition to the data, we also have a crosswalk that connects the iReady data to our Missouri learning standards. Now, for us, we have to take that and then bridge it to what occurs in the classroom and that's where proficiency scales come into play. So when we talk about proficiency scales, a lot of people know terms like advanced, proficient, basic and below basic. But when we start to look at, you know, what it means, you know, it's hard for a person to actually articulate what we're talking about. And so one of the things that we want to do is show that with these proficiency scales, what we're really doing is identifying what a student will be able to do as far as their academic ability or their skill levels and do it in such a way that the building leadership will know where they're going, but more important, that the student and the families that we serve know exactly what's being taught, why it's being taught and how it's being taught. So that's the first thing that happens during day one of Gear Up. On day two, we really start looking at the proficiency scales that we have for Missouri. One of the things about proficiency scales is that you'll find that some of them are literally just out of a box where it's generic. Our scales are actually customized to the Missouri learning standards. So when teachers and building leadership look at these scales, we're looking at what skills we want our students here in Missouri to know. And then we're looking at the interim assessments to then test those abilities or those skills. So we're not only looking at the how and the why, but then we're really looking at the learning that has occurred, how much has occurred and what learning needs to continue. The third day is where we really start tying all of this together and that is the data deep dive process. And the reason why I say it's a process is because it's not a one-time event. When we do a data deep dive, what we're really looking at is interpreting student responses and how that relates to the skills. Then we're looking at what trends we see, more important, identifying areas of growth. The last part of this really looks at our intervention and how to use that time that is designated to the best of our ability. And we're talking system-wide. So think of the gear up as being the system-wide professional opportunity to really talk about where we're going with all of these points of data. The second opportunity for learning that we're going to have is now looking specifically at the building level and that's the Leadership Institute. Now this year, the institute is going to be facilitated by TNTP. And one of the things that they're going to be talking about are those best practices that we've learned and gleaned during this post-COVID or COVID pandemic time, where we had remote instruction, making sure that buildings take that, those best practices and then incorporate them into this post-COVID instruction. The speaker for this particular event is going to be, the keynote speaker is going to be Bill Ferder and some of you may know him from Solution Tree, very great speaker that talks specifically to the building leadership. The last one for the summer, I'm talking about the summer of 2021, will be our Professional Learning Institute. Now, this is something that occurs every year for us and it's specific for, are specifically designed to hit those teachers. So now we've gone from the system model of the district to the building model of the school leadership, now down to the teacher that's going to be actually providing classroom instruction. Now, again, the keynote speaker for this event is going to be Patrick Briggs. Like I said, it's a two-day event. Mr. Briggs, besides being the keynote speaker, is also going to talk specifically about Avid, which is a program that we've adopted. And the thing about Avid is it really helps our secondary students be more prepared for those advanced level courses. I'm talking about like the honors courses and the AP courses, as well as having success in their higher education fields of study. In addition to Mr. Briggs, we also have Jan Hegg. Jan Hegg is actually an associate with the Marzano Institute. And the reason why we have her aboard is because we definitely want her to speak to the teachers about how to use our customized proficiency scales. The main reason for that is the teachers need to know how to use these to guide their classroom instruction, but also how to speak directly to these proficiency scales because, again, these scales are not just for the building leadership, but these scales are for the students and the families that we serve so that they know exactly what type of resources their children are getting here at Kansas City Public Schools. So if you think of it, we're taking the data that we get from platforms like iReady, pairing that with our customized proficiency scales with the interim assessment and the data deep dive to allow buildings and, and teachers to understand the full scope of what we have to ultimately close that gap and provide the best instruction possible to the students that are here in Kansas City Public Schools. So at this point, I'm actually going to pivot and hand the mic over to my colleague, Ms. Sheri Easton.
I gotta bring it down way low, 5.3. So good evening, Dr. Bedell, Mr. Hogan, board. I'm going to talk to you tonight about two initiatives that are designed to specifically work with our, moving our tier three students into tier two and tier one. You've heard my colleagues talk a lot about tier one, tier two, tier three. So these initiatives are specifically designed for our tier three students. The first one is the literacy grant, which has been, it's a CLSD grant, comprehensive grant funded by DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It has been applied, it's been awarded to all of our tier three elementary schools. So all of those schools will have a comprehensive grant that's funded to them for three years. This grant is designed to work on reading and writing workshop from kindergarten through sixth grade with a particular focus. You heard Mr. Williams speak about how we had that drop within our primary grades, first grade, second grade, third grade. Those are our students that were most impacted by COVID. The literacy grant is going to have a specific focus on kindergarten through third grade instruction with particular focus on those foundational skills of phonics and phonemic awareness. So we're hoping that the literacy grant over the next, course of the next three years will really move our kindergarten first and second grade scholars out of tier three and into tier two and ultimately tier one. It's, like I said, it was a three-year grant with the culmination of a developed literacy plan. So each of our tier three schools will have, over the course of this grant, develop a comprehensive literacy plan that's in alignment with both the district's literacy plan and also the state's literacy plan. So they'll, they'll create a literacy plan that's in alignment that over the next, over the next course of the three years. The first year, this coming year, will focus on classroom observations. The members of the grant team and also coordinators from the, from the department, from Kansas City Public Schools will conduct classroom observations and give pointed and detailed feedback back to teachers on their literacy instruction. So that first year is going to be a lot of observation and feedback for our teachers. So we're hoping we'll really grow specifically in terms of moving those tier three students into, into tiers two and tier one. So that's a little bit about the literacy grant that we're very excited about. The other initiative I want to talk to you about is our Senate Bill 319 students. As we all know, Senate Bill 319 is a state mandate that stipulates that fourth graders that are reading two or more grade levels below, so below that second grade line are facing, are to receive 40 hours of targeted reading instruction that occurs outside of the instructional day. And then if they are still, at the end of the year, still reading at that second grade or below mark, those Senate Bill 319 students have, they face mandatory summer school where they are given specific and guided instruction with a reading certified teacher to help move them along. And if they are at the end of summer school, those scholars are tested again and they will then determine whether they are promoted to the, to the fifth grade or if they're still below that second grade mark of the state mandates that they are retained in fourth grade. So I have some really good news to share with you about Senate Bill 319 this year. First of all, Kansas City Public Schools uses iReady in the fall administration to identify those Senate Bill 319 students. We look at that tier three model and determine those tier three students in the fourth grade are considered Senate Bill 319. They receive 40 hours of tutoring between the months of October and May. And then we use the spring iReady administration to see if students can be dismissed off of that Senate Bill 319 list so that, how we move them, right? This year, I can happily report that we had 192 scholars that were identified as Senate Bill 319 in the fall. We are ending the year with just 29 students in our fourth grade that are qualifying for Senate Bill 319. So that is remarkable accomplishment. It's the, the lowest that I've been, I've been in this position for eight years, that 29 scholars is the lowest that we've seen Senate Bill 319 in the time that I've been here. So as you know, that because, most of the tutoring this year because of COVID occurred online, so there are two things that I want to report to you as to why we have that, why we saw that drop from 192 to 29, which is amazing. So most of the tutoring teachers, besides, because it was COVID and they had to do online tutoring, usually in the past, they did tutoring once a week. This year, they did it multiple times. Most schools did two or three times a week for tutoring because they were online sessions. So their teachers were trying to compensate for the online and then that less connection with the students. So because of that, and then also the 14 of our 24 schools had multiple tutors. Usually we have one Senate Bill 319 tutor per school. This year, many of our schools had two and three tutors, which decreased the number of students that were in their, on their caseload. Each teacher, each certified reading teacher that acted as a tutor had far, far fewer students. students. So I want to thank you for the donation, or not donation, dedication of, of funds, additional funds that were allowed to have those additional tutors. I think that's something that definitely paid off, the multiple times a week that they did because of COVID, and the, and the multiple tutors at each building, so they had smaller test size, smaller group size. Those two things really resulted in a, in a significant drop from 192 to 29. So it is my recommendation that we continue those two things into the future and make sure that we can move those scholars from Tier III into Tier II and Tier I. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that as of this point, all Senate Bill, those 29 students, all Senate Bill 319 students have been enrolled in summer school, and they will all receive an additional 10 to 15 hours of specialized tutoring with, during summer school, with a certified reading tutor. So that's just a little bit of an update on the two initiatives, the Literacy Grant and Senate Bill 319 is where we stand for those initiatives that are designed for Tier III students. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you for, for those presentations. Any questions from the board? I'm guessing there are. Mr. Barca?
Yes, I think this is probably for Mr. Williams more. Going back to the iReady fall to spring Tier I by grade and race, I want to make sure I capture this, because we're doing a lot of negatives means positives, positives means negatives. So I want to make sure I got it here. For these comparisons, as we look at, I'll wait till we catch up. I don't know if it's, it should be this document that I was looking at.
Okay, yeah. That's not on the slide. That was, that was one, the one that we just provided to you guys separately.
So are we looking for progress as negatives or positives in these fields?
We're looking for positive progress in honor above grade level or Tier I, and then negative in Tier III.
Okay. So I mean, that, that means there's grave concern here in a lot of these categories, right? Am I getting that correctly? And, and some of these categories where some are advancing and some are not, I mean, how do we, I'm trying to kind of tie this into the other slides here. So how, how do we rectify some of this? Because I mean, this is beyond just one population, and some of these seem almost like anomalies by grade. And so what, what are some assumptions we can make here that, that can help us understand this data a little better?
So I, I think some of the assumptions, again, are going to be based off of like, when, when the student sat for the actual test within the window is going to be one assumption. But the other thing I want to point out, and this is just from personal experience this year, you know, we talked about a data deep dive protocol, right? There's one thing to have, they, they call it data-rich and information-poor, right? The conversation has shifted this year to where I can, I can tell you personally, I was getting calls from principals and from teachers that were literally looking at their iReady data and going through it line by line and saying, hey, John Doe here, you know, help me with this particular kid. And we would go through, and we would look at iReady, and we would go through the domains, right? We'd say, okay, let's look at this kid's typical growth goal, let's look at his stretch growth goal, right? Okay, typical growth goal may be a change of 32 in a scale score, stretch growth maybe 50. Typical growth would be what a kid typically would grow in a year, stretch would be more than what you would typically see. So usually, one and a half to two years worth of growth in one year. And so the conversations we were having were literally granular. It got down to the point to where they're like, all right, I'm looking at math, for instance, I'm looking at numbers and operations scale score, I'm looking at algebraic thinking scale score. What should I do? I'm like, you've got to group that kid, right? You've got to take that kid and move him into a smaller group where he can get some more strategic instruction in what he's missing, right? And so I, I can tell you this, when, when everything is said and done, I'm very encouraged by the district's overall iReady results in the spring. And a lot of it has to do with that month, five weeks that we spent really digging into this data, trying to identify gaps, and then putting kids into reporting groups, and then providing that small group instruction. So you, you will see some groups that maybe are not as performing as, as, as well as we would like, but, you know, I don't want to say slow and steady is the path, but I mean, you know, we, we've got to do more digging into these data and look at, you know, any area where there is an anomaly, try to figure out what's going on, and then obviously provide that triage or that support. But I'm, I'm very, very confident with what we've seen, seen this year as a whole.
Understand, at, at least in an area that I think I know a little bit about, from the Hispanic population side, I'm wondering if, if extrapolating the ELL component can create a divergence of better understanding from that population alone, right? And I think you can also say the same thing about our black population and extrapolating refugees from that population. And so I wonder if there's opportunity there to kind of expand on some of this data as we look at IEPs and ELL students impacting different elements of this.
Oh, for sure. Yep, for sure.
Ms. Ford?
Microphone. I wanted to know if we're able to drill down this data. I just lost it. Yeah, it'll come back to me.
Ms. Buckner?
Um, so, um, there's a lot of language in this COVID era around like learning laws and gains, or, you know, like, what's another term? Unfinished learning, right? And you say that you're encouraged, and so I just want to be clear that this is Tier III, Tier I data, right? And, right?
That might, so that might be, can I take a look at what you guys are looking at real quick?
No, it's the slide deck.
Oh, yes, yes.
So you have, this Tier I data has been disaggregated.
Yep.
And you, you spoke to some of the, the challenges with testing at home, right? And we can all pull from anecdotal, anecdotal data on like, you know, like the challenges with families and learning from home, let alone testing. And so I wonder if this spring I data is a more diagnostic rather than looking at it as a game, if that makes sense? So can you talk me through like, and of course, I don't want to discredit our teachers and our administrators and how hard they've worked, but I'm also thinking about the environmental conditions that they're testing under at home, and then being in person, and what difference that made?
I think that, so first of all, we, we know, working with curriculum and associates, who, who owns the iReady platform, they've been able to go in and then disaggregate the data by who tested at home versus who tested in the building. So like, we still have KCVA kids, Kansas City Virtual Academy kids, who in the spring were taking it from home because they opted out coming into a building, right? I also want to give kudos to them as well, because we did organize a test session on April 21st, where we were doing it at multiple schools, and I even helped proctor some of these assessments, where the KCVA students were coming in to Martin Luther King, for instance, and they were sitting for that test. You know, just to kind of back up to where, to where I, why I feel encouraged, these, the iReady is strongly correlated to the MAP assessment, right? So preliminarily, when we're looking at taking the iReady data and then matching it back up to an achievement level with MAP, I feel really good about it. I mean, you know, I have not displayed that here on this chart, but just based off of what we've seen before, I, I think at the very end, we're going to see an increase. And some of that with the spring could be, I mean, students were super excited to be back in the building. I mean, at the end of the day, you've got some people that enjoyed being at home, but I'd say most probably didn't. I mean, they, they missed relationships with their teachers, they missed relationship with their friends, you know, all of that. I spoke about WEDA earlier. I actually, this is kind of funny, I actually proctored, or helped proctor WEDA at a Carver back in March. And so the kids show up, these are like second graders, right? And they come into the room, library, we're testing, and the kid says, hey, Mr. Williams, you know, time for recess, right? I'm like, no, buddy, it's time to go home, right? You came to take a test. He said, dang, I can't wait till I get back to school, right? So I think some of that that we're seeing in the spring, where kids were excited to be back. So they were probably putting their best foot forward, as opposed to maybe what they have been doing in the past. So we do have the ability to look at, you know, iReady 21 spring performance and compare it to 19. We can't go back any further than that, because the program was new in 1819, and then we didn't take it in the winter, but, or the spring last year. But preliminarily, our spring data looked better this year than it did in 19, especially when you talk about converting it to an achievement level that would be applicable for a MAP test.
So I would love to see that data, because I think that would communicate a, a clearer picture of where our students are. And then my next question is, is, is iReady adaptive?
Yes.
It is an adaptive test. And so when I'm looking at the breakdown of the skills around literacy, I gotta find it. Look at iReady reading performance by domain. I see that, you know, of course, our phonological awareness, phonics and high-frequency words are skills that early readers, like that's, those are some of the first skills, right? But then when we look at vocabulary, literacy, literary comprehension, informational comprehension, those are more complex skills, right? And the data isn't as great. And so I see that there's Tier III, there's a Tier III grant for those, you know, those early skills. So what is happening for those more complex skills?
I'll let, I'll let Sherri take that, take that answer. Question, sorry.
Hi, Ms. Easton.
Hi.
So I gotta tell you, Ms. Easton was one of my professors at U of K C, so hi, good to see you.
Good to see you too. She was one of my star students, I loved it. So that's a great question. The, the grant, while it will have a focus on kindergarten through third grade, those foundational skills, it's also designed to really focus on the best practices in readers' and writers' workshops through the sixth grade. So they're specifically working on readers' workshop this coming year for third through sixth grade, and then next year, they're going to add in writers' workshop as well. So those, those complex skills that you talk about, the informational comprehension, informational text, narrative comprehension, those kinds of stuff, that the grant will focus on those at our Tier III schools. So I just want you to know that it's absolutely going to focus on third through sixth grade as well, they just have a particular focus as a, as an added focus on kindergarten through third grade, so that we can get those. Basically, the idea is that we want to get our students reading by the end of first grade, so that they're able to take on those, those higher-order comprehension skills at the second grade and on. So, so definitely want to leave you with the idea that the grant will focus on both kindergarten through third grade and then all the way fourth through sixth grade as well, definitely, just has a specific focus on, on, as an additional focus. So we, so we're hoping that it will work on kindergarten through sixth grade.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ford, are you back?
I'm back.
Okay.
So I wanted to know if there are elements of the Senate Bill or SB 319 that we could be applying to other students that maybe, maybe are not as behind the two or three grade levels, but maybe close? Are there elements of that programming, the tutoring, all those academic aspects that could also support other students in that way? Because it seems to be making some pretty good gains.
So the short answer is absolutely. The state does stipulate that Senate Bill 319, when it has its after-school tutoring there outside of the instructional day, the state does stipulate that those groups have to be specific, so they can't be mixed with other students. Senate Bill 319 has its own legal definition, so tutors would not be able to work with additional students, but that doesn't mean that we can't follow that tutoring model and have other people. So that's absolutely something we should definitely look into next year.
I also think it's important for the board and the community that, you know, we, we've had our struggles around tracking Senate Bill 319, and last year, we ended up, we, we've had to revamp the whole way that we went about doing that, even to where we built it into Tyler, that will now have to move over to what, Infinite Campus?
Infinite Campus.
We're implementing that. But there was just a lot more intentionality, I think, around how we were making sure that we were tracking our Senate Bill 319 kids. Previous board saw a lot of that over the past years, where we were just kind of caught like, man, we were just kind of, we were loose with it.
Yep. So this year, we, absolutely, so, Dr. Bedell, so this year, we did three separate, we did three tasks, or took three steps to mitigate that issue from previous years in terms of really closely tying and closely tracking our students. So the first thing that we did was we trained all of our secretaries to actually input the data. We used to have teachers input their attendance data straight into Tyler or Infinite Campus. This year, they turned their data in, or their weekly attendance into their secretaries, and the secretaries recorded it, so it was much tighter controlled. That's the first step we took. The second step we took was that we didn't release any, say, they get a stipend, they get special payroll for, for their after-school tutoring. We didn't release any tutor, any tutoring funds for their, for their stipend until all of their attendance had been turned into their secretary. So just, you know, really tight control on that. The other thing, the last thing that we did, the third step, is that we had students, teachers had to make, all the tutors had to write a reading and, excuse me, my mouth's dry, a reading intervention plan for each of their students that were Senate Bill 319, and they had to turn that into me at the end of each semester. So they turned that reading improvement plan, those are all digitally available, so that we, they turned those in so that we could track exactly how many hours for each student. So we, so as Dr. Bedell said, we just had really tight control on it this year, so that we knew exactly how many hours each student had in tutoring, and what their starting score was in iReady, and what their ending score was according to that reading plan.
Dr. Jones?
Yes, just a quick comment, because I remember in, I think we were looking at fall to winter data several months ago, and one of the concerns that I had raised was, well, if we felt like there were so many kids who weren't actually taking the exam, that the Tier I was actually inflated. So that was a concern I had. So to see that there's been an increase, I'm very encouraged by that as well, because it, to me, I was worried that there was an artificial increase for the home test that so many kids didn't take, they opted out. So to see that we've improved, it's just, I, I think that is encouraging.
Let me just, and I'll, I'll, may have to ask Dr. Shepherd, I'm going to put you on the spot. I know you all have been in conversation with curriculum associates, and I know that they may have been sharing data around what they're seeing in other school districts, this trend around people seeing that it may not be as horrific as people were anticipating. Is that, is that, is that a trend that's, that's kind of happening in other districts that are, that are utilizing iReady too?
Yes, what we're seeing across the country is that reading did not regress as much as math did. And then another trend that we're seeing is the earlier grade levels regress more than the later grade levels. So when you look at kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, we saw more regression in those grade levels. Well, when you think about it, those are the grade levels where the children receive their foundational skills, and we were trying to do that online. And a lot of teaching kids how to read is about them being able to read your lips and your mouth and those type things, and we were trying to do that instruction online. And so we know that as a district, we're going to have to deal with this in a very robust manner next school year. Our first graders who are moving to second grade, making sure that those class sizes remain true to our tiered model here, like we have 17 for Tier III, because our teachers do need less kids. So we're going to do the, I think we should do the best we can to keep those down, so that teachers can have enough time to really focus on small groups and get with every group every day, so they don't have so many kids as they can. But the national trend has been K through II regression, and then also math more so than reading. And, and a lot of times, I think with the reading, students are, once they know how to read, it's not a matter of you trying to teach them how to read, and so they were able to continue their progress in their reading, whereas our babies weren't able to do that.
Ms. Wolfstein?
Thank you. Yeah, that frequency and size of classes are the two things that just keep popping up, and whatever we can do to continue to increase the frequency and lower the ratio, I think is good. My comment was just around, I was actually glad to see in the Leadership Institute a focus on kind of what was learned during remote learning, because I think, one of the things I wanted to encourage the administration, you know, we just went through this 16 months of completely new teaching, learning, and I really wanted to make sure that, I was going to encourage you guys to please, before it gets out of our brain, you know, when we've moved on to summer school and next year, what, what did we, surveying principals, teachers, parents, and even those secondary students within our own district, what worked extremely well here? Because we did hear that there were a few things, especially for some of those secondary students who did better online, you know? What worked well? What didn't work so well? What would we want to change? God forbid, we go back into that environment around hybrid learning, because I think the hybrid learning with the because I think the hybrid learning with the asynchronous, I think there were things that we learned worked well and what didn't. And just, I would like to see a report back to the board on those learnings just so we don't lose that insight before we, because we know we get into going into the next thing. So that was just something that I, I was glad to see they were going to focus on it in the Leadership Institute, but something a little bigger than that, you know, that I would like to see us get.
Ms. Cortez?
So I kind of feel like I'm at the Passover Seder and the hour is late and everyone wants to go home and I don't blame them. So a couple of requests. Number one, if we could, in the Friday update, get a copy of the actual presentation deck? Since I know that there were more slides in the presentation than what we got earlier, that would be great. Number two, I will probably follow up with my questions, most of my questions in writing so that they make sense as opposed to me trying to read my notes at this hour. So I'm going to focus on a couple of things. Number one, Mr. Williams, you talked about kind of the predictive power of iReady relative to the MAP test. I'm hoping that that means that in August or September, when we have that data, you'll be able to share with us how, how much insight, you know, how much correlation there ends up being between the iReady data and the MAP test data? Is that a reasonable expectation?
It is, it is definitely reasonable.
Okay.
Yep. When we did it in 19, and I, don't quote me on this, but it was really close. I mean, we were within two MPI points on the iReady from what we actually achieved on the MAP test. So, and just for ELA and math, because that's the only thing that we can predict with, with iReady. But super close, so I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to do that.
Okay, terrific. I guess my, my second request is I really appreciate this disaggregated, this data by school and the disaggregated tier one data. Is it likely or possible that we can see this for tier two and tier three as well?
Anything is possible.
Okay. Because I think that'll actually help put some form around some of the other questions that, that I have that may not play out as much in those other tiers as it does in tier one. So two other items, kindergarten and first grade, right? It strikes me that, and maybe second, but certainly from the data that we've seen tonight, is, are we anticipating that we're going to have a different approach to getting our kids who were in kindergarten and first grade kind of a good running, accelerating start next year and maybe even through the whole year? Because we got a lot of, we got a lot of work to do to get them the tools to be successful moving forward.
Yes, I agree. And I think we're going to deal with that in a multifaceted way. We're going to make sure, first of all, that those class sizes are small. We want to do everything we can as we start shifting teachers around. We want to make sure that we preserve the class size for the babies for K one and two. And then when you look at all of the professional development that we're going through this summer, and we have spoken about proficiency scales before. And I think what's really going to help our teachers is to really be able to locate where our children are and to really have a process by which they move them where they need to be. And when Dr. Jones got up here and he gave his process that we're going through starting next year as far as how we're going to give our interim assessments. And I mean, we gave interim assessments this year, but of course, we know that they may not have been the most reliable because children were taking them from home. So when we give those interim assessments and when we look at those proficiency scales, that informs the work of the teacher so that they know exactly if the kid is here, how do I move them? And so then the work of, the deeper work of PLCs. And all of our schools are implementing professional learning communities at some level, some a little bit more, with a little more depth than others. But that's another way that we're going to be able to continue to collaborate around this. You know, the collective efficacy, when we, we bring everybody together, we're bringing these teams together for GIRA. We're bringing teams together for the Leadership Institute because as Dr. Jones said, the, the GIRA Institute is the broader perspective of how is the district going to deal with this? How are we going to use proficiency scales and link them to interim assessments and link them to data deep dive so teachers can go deeper with kids and they can have the type of small groups that they need to be able to have in order to move them forward and to accelerate them more than one year? But then also at the Leadership Institute where we look at the, where we look at what happens in the school, not just the district, how we're dealing with this from a district level. But we have schools that are actually going to be doing their own plans at, from the school level. Then by the time they get around to the teacher institute, teachers are going to do their own plans. How will I look at this and how am I going to deal with it? And then we'll provide a lot of support from professional, our professional learning area, our curriculum instruction team, our principals will be tooled with more around how to assist teachers. But it really is just the integrity of how we implement what we're doing. We can get kids, we can grow kids more than one year if we're doing all of these things well. So it's not a, there's not a magic bullet to it. There's just us making sure that we implement everything that we have planned. We implement it well. And then we can start to see those gains. But then tutoring, you know, we will, tutoring is definitely going to be, our schools all got lots of money. They got lots of ESRA funds. And we've asked them not to take those ESRA funds and buy positions. We've asked them to do things that would be more sustainable, such as making sure that their teachers had the adequate amount of professional development to teach the children what they need to know and to find different ways to provide intervention. But also tutoring, tutoring on Saturdays, tutoring after school. You ask, what are some things, I think Ms. Wilson, you asked, what are some things we learned? We know we can tutor virtually. We learned that. And so now our teachers can, they don't have to stay at school to tutor. We can actually tutor from home. So just looking at all of that, and those are the things that our institute will be, those are things that we expect to happen. Those are objectives that we expect to happen over the course of that time where we have these conversations and we leave with a concrete plan as to how we're going to do this. They'll have all the tools they need. Now it's just about this concrete plan as to how this is going to be implemented on the ground level.
Awesome, thank you. And, and really, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but this will be one of my questions. Just in, just in a 20-second look at the tier one, school by school data, there are a couple of schools that jump out. And so one of my questions is, you know, and I'll put it in writing, but it's going to be, how, how are we looking at those schools and asking the question, are these things that we can, through the summer education or through other means, you know, kind of push into some of our other settings? I mean, what are they doing that's making their jumps so much bigger?
Yes, yes.
Don't have to answer it tonight, but I want to put it out there because I think that's, you know, those are, those are our kids in our buildings.
Yes.
What are we learning from ourselves?
Sure, and that's a great question.
Okay.
All right, I think we'll give the final word to Mr. Barca.
Quick, I promise. So just safe to assume, as we look at, back to the same page, K and 10th, 11th and 12th grade, there are either no individuals from the other sub-populations or they're so small that...
They're so small, we took them out, yep.
Okay. So and that, that is obviously a concern in, in all those populations where the majority isn't represented, well, the minority populations are not extrapolated across.
Right, right, right. Well, and then, and keep in mind too, with the, you know, iReady's curriculum really stops at eighth grade. I mean, we have in the past used it for, you know, those ninth grade students that were identified as tier three. In schools, sometimes we'll request to test 10th graders or 11th graders, but the platform's not really, really built for those.
So that, that may just be an absence of data, not necessarily an existence of the absence of tier one performance from those populations.
Right, right.
Perfect, great.
All right. Well, that, thank you to the team here, the district team. We had a little bit of an overloaded agenda, so I'll apologize for that. I know you guys have all had a really, really long day. And same, same to the board. Thank you for the really, really robust and thoughtful conversation and questions. This is, this is the sort of thing we should be doing together. So Dr. Bedell, I'll turn it over to you to just give us an update on what we'll see at the June 23rd meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll have several items that the board will be asked to take action on, the amendment for FY '21 budget. We'll have the budget approved.